Experience for you personally. Vice Chair of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission, Jackie Dupont-Walker.
It was a deja vu experience that I didn't anticipate. I didn't necessarily welcome it initially, but I would not have done it differently. I am glad to have been involved with 29 wonderful people who care about their community, who knew how to disagree without being disagreeable and to go forward, all of us, with a love for this city and a desire to make it better.
Well, Ms. Jackie Dupont-Walker, it has been a pleasure speaking with you today, and thank you for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Likewise, and thank you for having me.
The report presented to council was a lengthy document containing 73 recommendations. The commission held numerous public meetings and conducted surveys to come up with those recommendations. Several items considered generated more conversation than others. One of the big talking points, what is a stakeholder? Joining us now to explain the commission's definition of a stakeholder is Vice Chair of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission, Jason Lyon. Mr. Lyon, we welcome you to Council Week in Review.
Thank you for having me.
You know, 73 recommendations, and one of the most difficult questions, what is a stakeholder? Now, we understand at least one person on the commission did not agree to the definition. Has it been finalized, and what are your thoughts?
It has been finalized by the commission. In the end, the report was adopted unanimously by the entire commission, but the individual recommendations were also voted on. And that was probably the single hardest issue to come to agreement on, and we came as close to consensus as we could with 20-something votes on the definition. What we came up with is that a stakeholder is anyone who lives, works, or owns property in the neighborhood, or who can document that they have a verifiable interest in the community. Currently, the charter says that a stakeholder is anyone who lives, works, or owns property. And then subsequent ordinances expanded that so that neighborhood councils could broaden that to community group members, people who attend a church or school, parents involved with a PTA. But what we found is that having 89 different definitions of stakeholder for 89 different neighborhood councils had the effect of confusing people and disenfranchising people in some neighborhoods where they would like to be able to participate but aren't allowed to. And given that 88% of neighborhood councils had already adopted an expanded definition of stakeholder, we thought it was the best way to go. That, you know, the goal of the system is to promote more citizen participation in government, which is the primary goal of the neighborhood council system, then you can't start by having a closed definition of who's allowed to come in the door. So what we said is, everyone's welcome in the door, and everyone's welcome to participate. You just have to show what your stake in this community is.
So it's pretty much open, then, to anybody in the communities?
It is. And then, you know, that raised questions of the idea of a takeover of neighborhood councils. There are a lot of stories of business interests organizing a group in the community, or busing in workers, some of the stories go, to take over an election, and that is a possibility and a very real one. So we also adopted recommendations that allow neighborhood councils to structure their boards in such a way that no one group of voters could take over a board, and that you can guarantee in that way that the board continues to be a representation of the diverse voices of a community.
You know, before we move further, I'd be interested in asking you, there were 73 recommendations. Now, is there a standard number of how many you can actually enter, or is that just something that the commission came up with?
Oh, no. We were charged with reviewing the system and coming back with our recommendations. We might have had one, we might have had 2,000. 73 is what we came up with. And in some ways, that number is sort of arbitrary, because within those recommendations are multiple action steps that need to be taken to improve the system.
Now, voting was another area of contention, and we've all heard about the alleged dog voting in the neighborhood council election. How has the commission dealt with the protection from voting fraud?
Okay. Let me first dispel the popular myth, a dog has never voted in a neighborhood council election. It's one of the very popular stories, but one of the things that we determined factually during the course of the commission is that that never happened, though everyone's fond of that story. What we came up with is that there's a lot of doubt about the efficacy of the neighborhood council election system as it's currently set up. It's run by the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and the individual neighborhood councils themselves, and that has not generated a lot of stakeholder confidence. It has generated a lot of grievances against the process, and it has sucked up an enormous amount of time for these volunteers who would really like to be spending their time on, you know, improving their communities instead of the bureaucracy of trying to put together an election. And so we've recommended that we turn over the elections to the people who are experts in the election process, which is the city clerk's office. I think that recommendation has a lot of support citywide and within City Hall, and I hope that we see that adopted and implemented in the next couple of years.
So will this be the first time that the city clerk's office will be involved, and will this become a standardized process?
Yes. The city clerk's office has been involved before. About two or three years ago, the city council decided that we needed some standardization of the process, and a sort of broad set of election guidelines were developed to apply citywide, and the city clerk was very helpful in assembling those guidelines. This will create a more standardized process. It will allow some flexibility for individual communities, boards will, every neighborhood council will determine the structure of its own board, for example, and who's allowed to vote for individual seats. That'll be a decision still made by neighborhood councils. But the running of the election and the election process will be uniform citywide and will be analogous to all the other city elections.
Now, one of the council members was concerned about eliminating the Brown Act, which governs how meetings are conducted, but you've come up with something a little different. Could you tell us about that?
Well, I think there was probably an unfortunate choice of wording in our own recommendations that said something about exempting neighborhood councils from the Brown Act, when indeed that's not what the recommendation is at all. What we recommended is that the city come up with an open meeting law that is tailored to the specific requirements of the neighborhood council, because the Brown Act, the state open meeting law, is very much written with elected paid officials in mind, and it works a little differently on a volunteer basis. So what we've tried to do is create a system where neighborhood councils are able to communicate with each other outside of meetings to get some of the work done that would be done by staff of an elected official, while still preserving the guarantees of transparency and openness. And indeed, the law that we've proposed goes further than the Brown Act in guaranteeing that openness is a top priority, because the Brown Act unfortunately doesn't really contain any penalties except criminal prosecution, and the district attorney is far too busy to take on questions of a minor Brown Act violation or notification violation in a neighborhood council, nor should volunteers be subject to criminal sanctions for what may have been an honest mistake. And in the Sunshine Law that we created, there's a distinct and clear grievance process so that you can have your, have it rectified if a neighborhood council moves forward without proper notice for the public. And the Sunshine Law that we have proposed maintains all of the substantive provisions of the Brown Act. So it's really trying to create an open meeting law that's tailored to neighborhood councils rather than eliminating the Brown Act.
Now, do you think that will lead to a modification of the Brown Act, or create a whole new act in general?
Well, I think it probably, there's some question of whether neighborhood councils are subject to the Brown Act, but it is the opinion of the city attorney that they are. So the recommendation begins by asking the city council to first adopt this local sunshine law, and then to lobby the state legislature to exempt, specifically exempt neighborhood councils from the Brown Act in favor of the local sunshine law.
I see. Now, neighborhood councils receive an annual budget of $50,000. Has there been a recommendation for either more or less?
We did not recommend a specific dollar figure, because over time, we expect that that will change with, given the budget priorities of the city. It may go up, may go down. But we did recommend that the city continue to maintain equal annual funding for all neighborhood councils, as opposed to a proportional system.
You know, there was mention of land use during the council meeting. How much influence do the Neighborhood Council Review Commissions have in terms of land use?
I think neighborhood councils are fairly influential in terms of land use. It's certainly the area that has generated the most interest, both within the neighborhood council system and outside of it. There is a proposal floating around the city right now to allow neighborhood councils to have the right to appeal land use decisions, which they currently cannot. The review commission did not take a position on that proposal, because it's one of the things we couldn't find consensus on. We had a very diverse array of opinions on that matter, so we didn't take a position on it. But we did try to help out the land use process by requiring that neighborhood councils develop a clear, time-delimited process for how they will handle land use cases. We wanted education to be more available, and we wanted the city to require that developers visit neighborhood councils at the beginning of the process.
Well, Jason Lyon, thank you. It's been such a pleasure having you once again here on Council Week in Review, and we hope to speak to you again.
Thanks so much for having me.
Your Los Angeles City Council voted to receive and file the report, which will now go to the Education and Neighborhood Committee for review of the proposed changes. The final report of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission is also available online at ncrcla.org. You can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West Los Angeles, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, simply dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen on Mondays through Fridays at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. That concludes our program for the week ending September 28, 2007. On behalf of Jack Popejoy and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Rasha Goel. Thank you for watching, and please do join us for the next Council Week in Review.
I'm Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarogosa, and September is Latino Heritage Month. This month, we continue to honor our rich and diverse past and highlight the work of local artists who keep Latino traditions alive and vibrant in our communities. Los Angeles truly is where the world comes together, and I encourage you to explore the many facets of Latino culture by taking part in this month's festivities and visiting your neighborhood arts and cultural centers. For a listing of all the events, exhibits, fairs, and festivals, visit our website, latino.lacity.org.
Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 2, 2007. Very happy October to everybody, and thank you to the members of the public who have joined us here in council chambers. We are also broadcast live on Channel 35, and we welcome our viewers through the city's cable system, LA City View, Channel 35. We are rebroadcast each evening as well, and we are simulcast on the web at la-city.org, where if you're close to a computer, you can listen and watch to, watch the proceedings of the city council through the city's homepage. Our past meetings are also available on demand, online, video-on-demand service, which we started earlier this year, and that's also at la-city.org, and we commend that to you. Finally, if you're not close to a television or a computer, you can always use your telephone and call city council phone, which is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen to the audio proceedings of the full council or any of our individual council committees. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by Councilmember Tony Cardenas, Wendy Gruel, Tom Labonge, Bill Rosendahl, and Dennis Zine. That gives us six members. We need 10 members of our 15-member body to constitute a quorum and begin business. I'd like to remind the council members who are not here and who are not excused that you should be here at 10 o'clock, properly pursuant to our council rules. Thus, I'd like to ask Councilmember Alarcón to join us, Councilwoman Hahn to join us, Councilmember Parks to join us, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Cardenas are excused today, though Mr. Labonge is here, and we appreciate his attendance. Again, we have agendas in the back for folks if they'd like to see what we are discussing. Those are available online 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for any of the special items. We also have speaker cards for folks who would like to make public comment on any of the items that didn't receive a public hearing in committee. Furthermore, if you'd like to speak at our general public comment on issues that are not on our agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, please fill out a speaker card, hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'd be happy to incorporate that into our meeting today. Lastly, if you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always take advantage of our Van Nuys City Council chambers and testify via video conference from there, and that is a way for us to get closer to all Angelinos and where they live. And we have the first meeting of the month of each Friday in the Van Nuys City Council chamber, so this Friday, we will be out in Van Nuys, and we ask folks to be there. We have 10 members, so, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcón, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. 10 members present and in quorum. Ms. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Alarcón moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves that, and Mr. Wesson seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Ms. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute for today.
Okay. I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Reyes, if you'd be kind enough to lead us back, good to have you back.
Thank you, Council President. Everybody, please rise, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, the mayor of the world.
Justice for all. Thank you.
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back for public comment at the outset. First items, please.
Items 1 through 6 are street lighting. District items, notice for public hearing. There is expected to be 12 members. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold the ordinances until we have 12 members.
Item 7 is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 9, notice for public hearing, and the recommendation for council action is to grant the application.
Okay, Ms. Perry, that requires a motion, so Ms. Perry will move on item 7, the public convenience of necessity in District 9?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Reyes second, so that's before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. You can hold 8 through 10 and take the next items beyond that.
Items 8 through 41 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. Anybody wishing to call those items special, 11 through 41?
Yeah, me do. I do.
19 for Mr. Rosendahl. Are there specials, colleagues? I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, these are items that have had public hearings?
Public hearings have been held.
Okay. Any items besides 19, Ms. Perry?
With, once it's been approved.
Okay. Any other special items between 11 and 41? Seeing none? Let's go.
Mr.?
Oh, yes, Mr. Weiss?
Move to receive and file, item 29.
29?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Weiss moves to receive and file without objection. That'll be the action as we take those on consent. No other specials? Going once, going twice? Open the roll.
Yes, let's, now that we have 12 members, include 8 through 10 as well for the ordinances.
Anybody want to call 8 through 10 special? If not, let's take up the balance. Besides 19, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Ms. Perry, forthwith on which one?
13.
13, forthwith without objection for Ms. Perry to the mayor. Next item, please.
Items 42 through 52 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call special? 51 for Ms. Gruel, 42 for Mr. Zine. Any other specials, colleagues? Items 42 through 52, we have no cards on those, as I see.
There is cards on item 44.
44, we'll call special then for cards for the public? Any other cards in the public, Mr. Clerk? Okay. We'll open and close the public hearings on the others, and on the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 53 and 54 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Specials, Mr. Reyes?
3, please.
53 and 54 for Ms. Gruel and myself. And that, if we can take up the next item, then?
Item 55 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. I will call that special myself. That takes us back to public comment, is that correct? Okay. We'll start with our public comment for today. We have a clock at the podium here to help people guide their comments. You get two minutes apiece, and we welcome members of the public here. Oh, I'm sorry, but just before, why don't we take up 1 through 6, since we do have 12 members? Anybody wishing to call those special? Seeing none? Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, those are approved. Returning to public comment, Noel Weiss will be our first speaker. After that, will be Alex Riza.
Council members, good morning. My name is Noel Weiss. I'm here to ask for some votes and some consideration in connection with the Lincoln Place matter. It's going to be on your agenda for tomorrow in closed session. The city attorney, as you, most of you know, has basically given bad advice to the council in the past in connection with this matter. We have a situation, I have a handout for each of you, a proposed resolution that I'm seeking eight votes for, based, the Lincoln Place, five, starting with Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Weezer, who's not here today. But I think it's important that these track map conditions be enforced. Again, Mr. Weiss, you're running, Mr. Weiss is running for city attorney, and I think it's important this to be a marker on his leadership relative to the fact of where he's going to stand on this, but this is a very important consideration, because two years ago, Mr. Reyes communicated to me, Noel, how could this happen? How could we have tenant protections and basically the tenants end up getting screwed? Bottom line is, the conditions that protected the tenants were not enforced by the city attorney. They gave the council advice that it was unenforceable in effect because of the Ellis Act. The recent court of appeal decision that just came down says that it is enforceable. Therefore, to enforce it means this council must direct the Department of Planning to hold a hearing under the nuisance abatement statutes, and we must move forward to do that, because you have this monument of failure, which is Lincoln Place, and it doesn't, and doesn't affect just the tenants, ladies and gentlemen. It'd be nice if people listened. I appreciate Mr. Reyes's consideration. Everybody else is not listening, for the record, so that people understand. But the bottom line is, this is the reason why we have problems. This is the reason why we have failures. This is the reason why the system isn't working, because the city council is not living up to its responsibilities. It is time, finally, to send a message to the AMCOs of the world, to the people who will violate their promises to the city, that it's not going to be tolerated, and that enforcement is going to be the order of the day. And I would appreciate your consideration for the resolution. Every one of you has a copy of it, and I'll hopefully be here so that we can, I'll follow up with follow-up comments. Thank you.
Alex Riza is our next speaker. Alex Riza, and after that will be Dr. German. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alex Riza, and for 34 years, I taught at San Fernando High School, and I'm here today as a member of the CARE Coalition, and we are here to urge the council to overturn a recent city planning commission decision allowing Providence Health and Services Corporation to expand Holy Cross Hospital without an environmental impact report. We would think that was a major mistake, and there's a lot of community concern about that decision. We have worked with the elected officials for the Northeast San Fernando Valley. We are pleased that Councilmember Richard Alarcón has taken a very definite position in favor of the environmental impact report. We also have the support of Assemblyman Felipe Fuentes, and also, I mentioned Alex Padilla, I believe, your former city council president. We are also concerned that the Northeast Valley for many years has not been taken seriously. We are pleased that in the last few years, we have had a new generation of leadership that has been a stronger voice, but we are still concerned that the Northeast Valley is not receiving equal protection and equal treatment, was comparable to other, more affluent communities. In recent years, communities such as Beverly Hills, Fountain Valley, Newport Beach have undertaken major hospital expansions, and they all have done so with an environmental impact report, not an MND. impact report, not an MND. And we believe we deserve a full environmental impact report comparable to those other more We believe that the community will be better served by having a full environmental report, environmental impact report, that will take care of all the concerns of the citizens of Northeast San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riza. Dr. German? And after Dr. German will be Nick Kroll. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Timothy German. My name is Timothy German, and I live at 15001 Mission Hills Road, Mission Hills, California, which is 60 feet from Providence Holy Cross Medical Center. I was born, I was born in Los Angeles at St. Vincent's Hospital in 1929. I attended St. Paul's Grammar School, St. Paul's Grammar School, and I graduated in 1943. I went to Loyola High School, graduated in 1947. I attended Loyola University, graduated in 1951. I attended USC School of Medicine and graduated in 1955. My father also graduated from the USC School of Medicine. He graduated in 1915. I'm telling you all this so that you'll know that I am not a carpetbagger, I'm not a developer, and I'm not a union member. I think that Providence Holy Cross needs to do an environmental impact report because they have never justified or explained why they want to do a provisional use modification building the hospital seven feet from Indian Hills Road, which will restrict the width of Indian Hills Road forever. I also object to them building the hospital 95 feet tall when the law now says it should be only 45 feet. I think that the hospital in 1971 was completely destroyed by an earthquake, and I think earthquake is still a threat to the medical center. I think this is why they need to do an environmental impact report. My neighbors, my neighbors were not informed of the expansion until June 22nd.
If I can ask you to conclude, Doctor? You can go ahead and finish that sentence, but if I can ask you to conclude, that the time on the clock, we try to be as fair and judicious with everybody as possible.
My neighbors weren't informed until June 22nd, 2007, and I think that they should be informed of the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Nick Kroll is our next speaker. And after Mr. Kroll will be George Ortega. After that, good morning.
Good morning, Council President Garcetti and respective council. We're here to ask you to overturn the city planning commission's recommendation to approve the hospital expansion for Providence Health Systems Corporation on an MND. I'm currently the chair of the Land Use Committee for the Selma Neighborhood Council. We support the expansion of the hospital, but we oppose irresponsible and unsafe shortcuts. Providence has spent two years and hundreds of thousands of dollars on attorneys and PR firms to avoid doing an EIR, which we believe is required under the law as our right. And the planning commission has gotten on board to set aside our rights under state law to a full environmental impact, to discuss the impacts of traffic, of parking, of air pollution, and of the effects of the health services being provided and not being provided by the expansion. This is critical. Providence will say that the delay costs lives. Well, two years of delay are chalked up to Providence because they should have done this right in the first place. We're asking you to do what's right, we're asking you to do it proper. We know that you will support the demand for a full environmental impact so that we can have a hospital that we're proud of. It's my hospital. Thank you very much.
Thank you. George Ortega is our next speaker. After George Ortega is Sky Anderson. Good morning.
Hello. Honorable Councilmen, my name is George Ortega. I'm with the Selma Neighborhood Council, and I also do traffic engineering for the city of Burbank, so I have some expertise in what I'm talking about. There's a parking and a traffic problem at the hospital, and as proposed by this development, they will only be aggravating it. They propose to increase the hospital beds by 50%, and by the planning rule of thumb of two parking spaces per hospital bed, by providing anything over 780 parking spaces, there is no parking problem. I submit that even by their own MND, the bookkeeping is wrong. They don't have as many parking spaces as they say. They have trailers and various other encroachments on parking spaces, and they have buildings that have functions that are not related to the hospital itself and should be providing parking on either the five parking spaces per thousand rate or something else because of their outpatient clinics, and they're not providing services to people who will be occupying hospital beds. And that accounts for a shortfall of 114 parking spaces. The encroachments that they have on parking spaces is 92. They shortcounted the number of striped parking spaces by 25, and my reckoning is they only have 621 spaces, and they're far short of what they required by their own MND. And by then, MND, if they have one attribute that has a significant impact, it requires an EIR.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ortega. Sky Anderson is our next speaker, and after that will be Creighton Jones. Good morning, Mr. Anderson.
I'm Sky Anderson. I'm a resident of Los Angeles for two, eight years. I live in this Skidder Hotel because it gets a little on social security, and it's a very nice hotel, it's very well-run, and it's very inexpensive. I can buy things like other things, like computers and nice cameras because I live there. But I see the abuse the homeless have from Mr. Broughton, Police Chief Broughton's Gestapo force every day. About a week ago, I couldn't sleep. I know, Mr. Grassadi, you make $170,000 a year, and the plight of the desperate homeless doesn't concern you at all. I watch you, you smile, and people are dying right around City Hall, but that doesn't bother you one bit. Anyway, I couldn't sleep. About 3:30 in the morning, I got up, walked around the block, I was at 7th and San Julian, and all these homeless people were walking away with their meager possession, their blankets and their whatever they had. And I didn't know why. I got to 7th and San Julian, and a police car was parked there with their highlights on, and they had two, I believe they were black men handcuffed, and people all over that block could see what was going on, and they were terrified of the police, and they got out of there. That's the Gestapo of Mr. Broughton's police force. It's sick, sick, sick. Do you think I'm alone? There are many people who agree with me. There was an article in the Daily News that said that what's going on, city council and the police chief are doing is wrong. There's an article in downtown saying we need more street facilities. UCLA law professor, a very respected man, wrote these articles. So the tide is turning. I suggest you get on the ball and do something about Mr. Broughton and get programs to help this homeless, because if you don't, you're just statistic people. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Anderson. I do care, and I do appreciate the work we've been able to do together in the past few years. Creighton Jones is our next speaker. After that is Quincy.
Yeah, how are you doing, Council?
After that is, excuse me one second, then, after that is Quincy O'Neil. Go ahead.
All right. So what I have to say today is probably the most important thing that will be said before this body, which is that I want to address the housing and home foreclosure crisis, which is hitting Los Angeles and the nation. I've submitted, and it's been sent to all the offices of the legislature, this, the Homeowner and Bank Protection Act of 2007. Now, so far, five state assemblies have submitted this resolution, Pennsylvania, Michigan, three others, which have about 100 co-signers in the state legislator. We've yet, Mervyn Dimly has signed his name onto it, though it has not been submitted yet in California. Now, what this is, a resolution which calls for a freezing of all foreclosures across the nation, and to have the federal government intervene to keep homeowners, five to seven million of which are facing foreclosure in the immediate period, allow them to stay in their homes, reorganize it so that they would make rental-type payments, which will be used as an ability to recapitalize the banks, because right now, the banks, under the weight of the hedge funds, are facing bankruptcy. So this would be a way to recapitalize the banks, keep people in their homes, and then start to organize and orient the flow of capital towards the redevelopment of our nation. Now, this is some, like I said, five state legislators have submitted this. This was a bill that was written up by the economist Lyndon LaRouche, for whom I work. I'm also a member of the Franklin Roosevelt Legacy Democratic Club. So we just urge the council, because of the void of leadership at the top, our federal legislators are not taking on this issue in an adequate way, so we're calling on state and local governments to take up this issue and to create a firewall, which is going to protect your citizens, because it's going to be your door that they're going to come knock down when they start facing the loss of their homes and being thrown into the streets. So we ask the city council to join with the state legislator in moving for the passing of the Homeowner and Bank Protection Act and force the federal government to act on this reality. Thank you.
Quincy O'Neil is our next speaker, and after that is Mayor Fogler out in Van Nuys.
Good morning. Good morning. I would also like to propose that the city council, in dealing with the home foreclosure or the mortgage crisis, also have hearings on the general banking crisis, that is not just a crisis that involves people losing their homes, but in fact, the bundled mortgage-backed securities and the other financial instruments that were created by Alan Greenspan are exposed to all our banks, and that there will be a banking crisis, not only the United States, but also nationally. It behooves the city council to be on record about this crisis. Recently, there's been a density of crises in cities where leadership at the local level has had to step up. I'm from New Orleans, and we're in a situation where, just like in New Orleans, people knew 40 years ago that the levees needed to be repaired, that we had a crisis, and even up to that point, no one did anything. So it's on your watch now, in Los Angeles, to do something about this crisis, to hold public hearings, to inform the public, and force the federal government's hand to make sure we don't have another catastrophe.
We'll go out to Van Nuys next, and Mayor Fogler is our next speaker, and then Donna Perman will be after that.
The city's already in a bankruptcy, folks, and we are having financial crises. You can do this to city workers and the police department, fire department, and all the city librarians, the professionals. And Zine, you ought to recall, your 5% get 2% every year, just like, you know, not going, tying to the judges, that all of you are getting 5% around the 50th horseshoe there, and you're asking city workers, you get only 13% over five years? This is chutzpah. How dare you do this to the city worker? They work very hard, and you got DWP, equal worker, equal pay, electricians, same kind of job, same occupation, getting less money than the city worker as an electrician in the DWP. This is unequal, and this is not right, and should be fought in court. I don't think the workers should settle this, and I think we should have a strike, we should have a right to get the colas, because gas has doubled from $1.50 to $3, folks, and you can afford, because you get, your 5% the last two years, you got $40,000. Why don't you return some of that money so the city workers can get some money? And also, your fee waivers and your CRAs, and that project in North Hollywood just put in $1 billion. That's not, and this is unnecessary spending of city money that should be well-spent for the city workers and the police and fire. You're not going to be able to keep these people, they want to get paid enough money here, folks. Think about it. Think about why you're not getting people to want to work, the DWP, they're protesting the disparity in pay, and what you are getting, you're making the rich higher in the pay, and lowering the middle class going down low to the low class. You're making the pay here very, very dangerous, folks, and this is very bad, very bad for our country, when we're in a real bad situation in Iraq. I want out, and I don't like this, what you're doing to the city workers at all. This is like, you're going to keep doing this, and then you're going to do what GM does, oh, we're going to hire workers later on, lower, lower pay, put the retirees on the unions, and cut the, you know, go after the healthcare, is that what you're going to do next to them? Well, we're not going to do it, because I'll go on strike myself.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Donna Perman is our next speaker, and then we'll come back here into council chambers. Kelly Curros. Good morning.
Okay, City Council, I'm Donna Perman from Van Nuys. How dare you give the shaft to city employees 13% over five years, the cost of living? Would you accept a mere 2% cost of living when you get your raise? I don't think so. People have to work overtime just to make it, just for gas to get to work. Don't mention public transit, that costs, that's too much, and it's difficult for some people who are working overtime. Would you ask DWP to take the same raise, 2%? DWP shouldn't have a cola if the city employees doesn't have it. You take a 5% raise, same as municipal judges, so why is it DWP making more than the police, teachers, librarians, sewer workers, and things like electrician and engineers get less money than the DWP engineers and electricians? Same job, same, same job, should be the same job with the same pay, equal pay for equal work. These are highly qualified jobs on both sides, why the disparity? Whether you be DWP or another department, you should make a rift between them. Probably it's discrimination idea, it's against blacks, Mexicans, and disabled who work in the lower departments, and probably most of these people are rich or whites. It's not right for you and the DWP to make more than the hard-working city employees. Does DWP scratch your back, and you scratch theirs? You're putting city employees against each other, so you, I want you to take back your 3% extra for two years, making it 6%. And give that back, and stop giving, oh, five years, give that back. Stop giving handouts to the CRA so they can build big, build big-density projects. Zoomadog says you only listen if it's campaign-related to yourselves. Campaign contributions. So this is not fair to city employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Our next speaker is Kelly Curros, and then Michael Hunt.
Okay, I'm back in LA. We got everybody? My name is Kelly Curz. I'm a registered nurse at Providence Holy Cross Medical Center, Director of the ER and Trauma Services. You've heard a little bit about our EIR, or lack of our EIR. What we have done at Holy Cross with the direction of the city staff is to develop a very extremely comprehensive MND that points out every single environmental impact that could be absolutely thought of. We are asking you to go with the planning commission's decision from July 26th, that unanimously voted for us to continue our construction project to expand our emergency department, I mean, our hospital with 100 beds. Why is this important? I'm a nurse, you're in public service. Everyone around here went into this business for the community, to help, to do what we can. Right now, you have the opportunity to save lives. We continually do it at Holy Cross. We do it every day. We have to decide who gets a bed, who has to sit in a chair waiting for a bed. Holy Cross has donated $33 million to care of the poor and vulnerable. Hospitals all over the city are closing. We're trying to expand. We're trying to make it so our community can have adequate healthcare. And all we're asking you is to go with the planning commission. Let us build, we can't wait. We can't wait another two years and put $40 million. That's people that could be getting our services, but we have to do it as fast and quickly as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Curz.
Oh, I forgot, 600 people from this weekend alone out of the 4,000. Sorry. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Michael Hunt is our next speaker, and then Matt Dodd.
Wow, good morning, folks. It celebrates 545 days of injustices that you guys violated my civil rights. We used to paint our face back in the old days when we wanted to act or do any other things. things. It's ironic that we still have injustices around this horseshoe. And, you know, the African proverb says, you know, we have to wait in the water to get anything done, while our civil rights violations have still been violated. Five hundred and forty-five days of injustices, just as bad as Louisiana, and we're in the second-largest city in the United States, Los Angeles. It's a wonder how people could sit around and sign off your civil rights, you know, just as nothing. Those people know who we're talking about. You know, after being arrested twenty-four times, you know, for injustices and voted in by the horseshoe, you guys should really understand. That's just what it is. You can only hold me back so long, four hundred, or five hundred and forty-five days of injustices. And we asked this district not to, you know, sign the note, and he still did. So my face, my face is going to be painted probably the next two or three weeks until we settle out. We did make a new ordinance, and we did give you our bill and our proposal. You know, I'm tired of personally waiting in the water, and I'm like, one city council guy, you know, I'm not going to stand here and let you do that to me. You know, you're going to set me free after a while, and let me go back to work so I can be out of you guys' business. But like the song says, you guys got to, we have to wait in the water, because I know that they won't suspend it for African-Americans. It's been proven.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew Dodd.
That's right, Channel 35, I'm not going to let him suffer it alone. I'm still there, we're not going away. You know, I used to think there was nothing more important, but you've got a guy, Rich Llewellyn, you should be getting him down here. He's a city attorney, and tell him why they're holding a guy's constitutional rights hostage until they create a new ordinance to stop him selling incense on the beach. And I'm going green for the environment today, because there's an infrastructure problem in this city and density. There's only eighty miles of coastline. The water's filthy, and that's what people come to California for, from all over the world. They don't come to Grand Avenue to walk down some fancy shopping mall, they're everywhere. They come for the beautiful beaches, but the people are going to pollute them, because they're in the high-rises downtown, and they're all going to be homeless in the streets, and all the urine and everything's going to wash into the sea, along with all the other trash and crap that comes out of the city hall. So yeah, I'm not happy. Zooma Dog's right, it's a density problem, too many development approvals against the vacancy rates, condo conversions, I see them all over the Marina. That's Bill Rosendahl's district. See, I'm with Arnold Schwarzenegger on the environment, but on one hand, you're just pounding the city with development, and then you're on the other hand, you're like, oh, let's put the lights out for one hour. Gee, yeah, that's going to save a whole heap of pollution. So Eric, I'm allowed to address you, I guess. You look real tough moving out the bulky items, but this is a $2.6 million bulky item, the Venice Boardwalk lawsuit in federal court. So you better, after you finish with Tenny Pierce, you better start looking for that $2.6 million.
That closes our general public comment. Just a point of information, the Marina is part of the county of Los Angeles and not the city of Los Angeles. That will close our general public comment for today. We've asked to take number nineteen first, Mr. Rosendahl. We have number nineteen, and I know Mr. Rosendahl wanted to set the stage for that item. Why don't we hold that on the table for a moment? Are you here? Okay, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we ask Ken Bernstein to come up? This is about the Barry Building, colleagues. It's a beautiful historic building in the 11th District where Dutton's Bookstore, world-renowned and a treasure to all of us, is located. Ken, take us through this number nineteen item, what it is and why we're here today.
Yes, good morning, councilmembers. Ken Bernstein with the Office of Historic Resources in the City Planning Department. Before you is a Cultural Heritage Commission report recommending historic cultural monument designation for the Barry Building located at 11973 West San Vicente Boulevard in Brentwood. The Cultural Heritage Commission unanimously found that the Barry Building met two of the specified historic cultural monument criteria. First, that it embodies the distinguishing characteristics of an architectural type as a significant example of international-style commercial architecture. The Barry Building exemplifies highly original use of a courtyard space with modern design elements. While it is a sparse, somewhat spare, modernist design, it also reveals subtle design features and detailing such as cantilevered stairs, angled storefronts, and smooth, unornamented surfaces that offers a successful combination of design, scale, landscaping, and pedestrian accessibility that's quite rare for modern architecture. And secondly, the commission found that the Barry Building met additional criteria in reflecting the cultural, economic, and social history of the Brentwood community for its role in shaping the growth and development of the San Vicente Commercial Corridor. So the commission vote was unanimous that it met two of the specified four historic cultural monument criteria.
Thank you very much for that. And before Mr. Reyes, Chair of Plum, speaks about it, I'd like to make a statement for the record. One of the most talked-about land issues in Brentwood has been the action taken by the city's Cultural Heritage Commission to declare the Barry Building located at 11973 San Vicente Boulevard a historic and cultural landmark. In July, after many months of grassroots work, community activists succeeded in winning the covenant designation. In addition to a unanimous vote of support from the city's Cultural Heritage Commission, the historic cultural designation is supported by the Los Angeles Conservancy, the Brentwood Community Council, the Brentwood Historic Society, and several local homeowner groups, associations, and petitions signed by over a thousand local residents. This is an extraordinary level of commitment and support from my constituents to preserve this outstanding architectural gem. The Barry Building is rare and an excellent example of mid-century California modern architecture in a commercial building, and would be the only building of its kind to be designated in Brentwood. The Barry Building represents a superior standard of architectural integrity and must be preserved for future generations. This building is a noted place of significance for many residents living in the Brentwood community. I dare say to everybody, it has served as a quiet retreat and gathering place within the neighborhood for more than fifty years. In a community where there has been a great deal of new development, it is understandable that the residents want to save some of its last bits of community history existing along the San Vicente Corridor. I want to support them in preserving a place within their neighborhood which serves as a community home, a loved and familiar place they have shared with their children for generations. This designation, however, does not end the matter, colleagues. It does not prevent the owner from developing his property or ultimately even demolishing the Barry Building. It creates a 180-day review process if the owner requests a permit for demolition or substantial alterations during which time the community and the owner could work together to try to achieve the goals of both parties. It could also be extended for an additional 180 days upon approval of the city council. This designation also requires that an EIR be prepared before the demolition is approved. In trying to protect the Barry Building, the Brentwood community followed the city's rules and has acted in good faith. However, without the protection of the historic cultural designation, the community is effectively disenfranchised with no safeguards to place for ensuring a fair and orderly process for achieving a balance between the desires of the community and the will of the developer. I am pleased to support the majority of the Brentwood community in declaring the Barry Building a historic cultural monument. And I strongly urge, colleagues, that you support the fine work of the Cultural Heritage Commission and ratify it unanimously in the decision designating the Barry Building as a historical cultural monument. I might say the Plum Committee, under the leadership of my colleague Ed Reyes and with the support of Jose Wezar, two to one voted in favor of doing this. So now it's up to us, council, to go forward. And if I could, Mr. President, I'd like to have Mr. Reyes say a couple of words from Plum. And, community, we're going to have a fifteen-minute public hearing, one minute per person. We have a lot more cards than fifteen, but we will give everybody as much time as we can within that timeframe to speak. But, Mr. Reyes.
If there's no objection to reopening the public hearing, we will do that after Mr. Reyes speaks. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. On September 18th, Plum reviewed this case. We heard evidence from both sides of the issue. Became very clear to me that there were outstanding characteristics, architectural style, significance to the architect Milton Cahy, I believe his last name is, winner of four merit awards by the Southern California Chapter of the AIA. As such, we felt that Councilor Rosendahl was showing a genuine interest in trying to reach a point in which both sides of the issue could find themselves in a winning position. But that to have this facility designated was critical because of its architectural style, its significance to the community, and the fact that there was a sense of hope that a dialogue could continue and that a compromise could be reached, where the business side could maintain its advantage, while the community could still bask in the glory of this architecture and the symbolic state of this building. So it was with those intentions that the committee supported the designation. I encourage my colleagues for an aye vote and support Councilor Rosendahl in his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We had a public hearing in Plum, and we will have the motion to reopen a public hearing of fifteen minutes. So we'll set the clock to one minute, which I know is short, but we appreciate the public's understanding with that, and we'll set the master clock at fifteen minutes total. Yes.
Go, I want to make one comment about Mr. Munger, Charlie Munger. Charlie Munger, you know, has owned that property for a long time and has been very generous in supporting Dutton's Bookstore and supporting it and subsidizing aspects of it. Dutton's Bookstore, which is not the same as the building but is housed in the building, has been such a treasure, and I want to thank him for his support over the years in keeping it going. And I know that when we all get to the table, our goal is to save the building, save the bookstore, and build something there that the whole community and Mr. Munger can live with. In fact, I've said to Charlie Munger, I look forward to cutting the ribbon with him once we all have worked out something that makes sense for all of us, and that is my goal, a win-win-win for everybody. And if we could open the public hearing, Mr. President, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Diane Cahy, and after that will be George Kiefer. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Diane Cahy, applicant for the designation of the Barry Building. The building was designed by architect Milton Cahy, my father. I'd like to say that his wife, Janet Cahy, is here today, as well as his granddaughter and great-grandson. As you heard, the building meets two of the historic monument criteria. The building is much loved as a piece of Brentwood's history, a community gathering place, and a significant landmark along San Vicente. The building has a timeless quality. Its architecture is not fashion, rather, through its simplicity and unostentatious authenticity, it is rooted in essence. We are here today to consider the significance of the Barry Building. The site provides an excellent opportunity to integrate this historic building with a new development. The designation of the Barry Building today will expedite the process wherein the community and I and Mr. Rosendahl can continue to work closely with the owner to develop a well-worked-out scheme that preserves the building and allows the owner to develop his valuable property. Thank you.
George Kiefer is our next speaker. Here's a resident, right?
Thank you, President. Here to support the LA Conservancy, the Plum Committee's vote, the Brentwood Community Council, and the designation of the Barry Building as proposed. And a particular thanks to Councilman Rosendahl for his leadership in bringing the parties together. Look forward to working with Charlie and with the community on working out something together, I'm sure we will, and that process will go forward from this day forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Ellen Schwartz is our next speaker, Ellen Schwartz, and then Michael Silverblatt.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I live about three blocks from the Barry Building for the last twenty-five years. Despite Mr. Munger's determined efforts to minimize the importance of the building and portray the issue as the savings of Dutton's, it's important that you understand that as much as we all love Dutton's and consider its closing a loss for the community, that is not why we are here today. In fact, if this were really about Dutton's, then long ago, we would have happily accepted Mr. Munger's proposal that we forfeit the building in exchange for his saving Dutton's. The Barry Building is much more than the location of a bookstore, it is an urban oasis on San Vicente Boulevard. We've come here today to ask you to recognize the overwhelming desire of our community to preserve this precious resource. By designating the Barry Building as an historic cultural monument, you are providing a template by which the community and the developer can explore every feasible way to preserve this extraordinary remnant of a time before Los Angeles was blanketed with shopping centers and mini-malls. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Silverblatt? After that will be Robert Renee.
Good morning. I'm Michael Silverblatt, and I do a program on KCRW about books, which is broadcast all over America in at least fifty cities. I do want to remind the council respectfully that in preserving the building, they are helping to preserve the bookstore, which I regard, and I think my opinion would be accepted as a standard opinion, as probably the last significant bookstore in Los Angeles. This was a city that was well-known for its bookstores. These people have, through thick and thin, maintained a standard for the community. When the Book Expo America comes to Los Angeles, as it will this year, Dutton's is inevitably saluted as being one in the tradition of grand American bookstores. A bookstore family runs it, the workers there know books, and are helpful to the clientele and helpful to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your show, which many of us are fans of. It's good to have you here. Robert Renee.
Yes, my name is Robert Renee. I'm the president of the Brentwood Homeowners Association. We represent approximately thirty-eight hundred homes in Brentwood and one of the largest and oldest homeowner associations in California. For the record, our constituents are concerned about traffic and congestion, any changes in R1, keeping Dutton's, and of course, the Barry Building. I want to thank Councilman Rosendahl for his incredible leadership here, and of course, given that the CHC finding gives us time to address all of these issues, we see no reason not to adopt the CHC's findings. And finally, I'd like to say that we appreciate the one-minute speaking engagements, keeps things going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And even had a few seconds given back to us, we appreciate that. Mike Bueller is our next speaker, and then Nancy Friedman.
Good morning. Good morning. Mike Bueller, Director of Advocacy for Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy has been working with the Brentwood community over the past six months in support of this nomination, having repeatedly met with the Friends of the Barry Building, the council's office, and the owners' representatives over this time, especially during the past few weeks. We would especially like to thank the efforts of Councilmember Rosendahl for his advocacy in support of the nomination and his efforts to bring the community and the owner together. The grassroots effort in support of this nomination is distinguished most by the diligence of its members to clearly understand the protections afforded by landmark designation, and perhaps more importantly, to understand its limitations. To be sure, Friends of the Barry Building submit this nomination with eyes wide open. The Conservancy strongly feels that the competing social goals alluded to at earlier hearings are not mutually exclusive ends. Indeed, alternatives have already been discussed that save the Barry Building and provide new space for Dutton's in the proposed development. Although your vote today culminates the landmark nomination process, it will also begin the project planning process in earnest, allowing the parties to come together and setting parameters for those discussions. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Nancy Friedman is next. After Ms. Friedman will be Wendy Su-Rosen.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Friedman. I'm the president of Brentwood 90049, a nonprofit active in our community as a Chamber of Commerce because we don't have a chamber. We began by renovating our local fire station nineteen and continue as a representative of our residents and business. residents and businesses. After the Plum hearing on September 18th, I was asked to take part in discussions with Mr. Munger's attorney and other representatives to try to bring a conclusion to our differences before this meeting today. You, our city council, have an opportunity to jumpstart these meetings as soon as possible by voting today to designate the Berry Building and to give traction to the process of forming a consensus for Mr. Munger's dream development and to address the inclusion of the Berry Building in the blueprint. To this point, I understand plans are being drawn up by a very well-respected architect from the Bay Area. Lingering any further will not be beneficial to Mr. Munger's hopes to move quickly. I ask that you vote now to put us back at the table. We are ready, willing, and able. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Su-Rosen. After Ms. Rosen will be Ty Miller.
My name is Wendy Su-Rosen. I serve as chairwoman of the Brentwood Community Council. I come here today in support of the Berry Building, which is eminently qualified for this designation. It is unanimously and enthusiastically supported by those qualified to express opinions on the subject. Several have testified throughout this process. The designation is also supported by the district's councilperson, Bill Rosendahl, and the Brentwood community, represented by the Brentwood Community Council, Brentwood 90049, and over 1,000 community members who took the time to write letters supporting the designation. The community looks forward to working with the building's owner, Charlie Munger, after the building is designated. It has, however, been very difficult to work with him without a designation. The community is asking Mr. Munger to embrace the designation by participating in the public process, integrating the Berry Building with its beautiful courtyard, and into his development plan. The Berry Building's high architectural merits, its cultural importance to local history, and the community's deep sentiments for this existing neighborhood landmark weigh overwhelmingly in favor of the designation. The Brentwood Community Council looks forward to your support. Before ending, I'd just like all the members of the community who took time out of their busy schedule to stand today to show you their support.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Ty Miller is our next speaker. After that will be Louise Frankel.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
My name is Ty Miller. I'm an architect, live, work in the Brentwood community. I would ask you to please preserve this building. It is an example of mid-century California modern architecture. It is our architecture. The architects of the '50s and '60s are here in Los Angeles on the west side. They taught at the University of Southern California. It's our heritage, and it needs to be preserved. It's a living building. It can be adapted and used and be beneficial and active for many, many years. We would appreciate the vote and the chance for this building to be incorporated into a living project on San Vicente and maintain the cultural and historical significance to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Louise Frankel is next. After that will be Laurel Davidson.
Good morning, Louise Frankel, Mountain Gate. I've come before this council for the last four decades on many planning matters, and I've learned in that time that the matters are best served when the council takes action, which my councilman would call a win-win situation for everybody, to advance the residents' interests in preserving and enhancing their community and developer's interest in utilizing his right to develop his property. The one way to give both sides breathing space and time to resolve their differences to force them to sit down is to endorse the unanimous recommendations for historical designation of the landmark Berry Building. This will assure the residents that an EIR will be required to develop the property around it. It will ensure a planning process that will consider traffic density and flow, deal with zone changes on various parts of the property, and protect the residential areas abutting this parcel. The residents have a right to preserve the community. Developer has a right to develop his property. So let's win-win.
All right. Thank you very much, Louise. Laurel Davidson is next, and after that is Joan George.
Hi, my name is Laurel Davidson, and I've been a resident, a proud resident of Brentwood since 1961. I've spent more than half my life in this outstanding community that really cares about the people and the buildings and everything that goes on here. We just celebrated our centennial last year, and I was actively involved in the celebration. I urge the city council to approve the vote before you because it will help to preserve not only the Berry Building but the joy of being a Brentwood resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan George is next. After that is Dolores McKinney.
Yes, as you heard, I'm Joan George. I'm from a land where buildings last forever, not California. This building is a good one. When I go there, I feel good. I feel in touch with the earth. I feel in touch with my life. I feel in touch with the community. Please, do what you have to do so that we have a chance to save the building. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dolores McKinney, and after that is Gillian Kleiner.
I am Dolores McKinney, representing the Brentwood Historical Society. As late as 1982, only 25 years ago, San Vicente was Brentwood's main street, filled with unique and individual shops. Since then, development has torn down existing buildings, raised rents, and driven out most of those special places. It has endangered our community's neighborhood feeling. What we're asking you to help us do is to save this building because it's our history, it's our past, and it's also our future. We want to work with Mr. Munger and create something that we're all proud of, incorporating the Berry without losing this icon of our past. After all, how often is anything perfect? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gillian Kleiner, and after that is Donna Mills.
Hello, my name is Gillian Kleiner. I'm here to represent myself and my children and my children's friends, and we all want to say what an incredible benefit and boon the Berry Building and the beautiful bookstore that it houses have been to our families. It's a place to inspire community, connection, education, and to make children realize that learning and sharing books can be part of a beautiful physical and spiritual experience, and I think that's what we all need. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Mills. After that will be Reagan Hecker.
Good morning. I'm here because I live in the Brentwood community also, and I just think it's really important for our children to know that we value our history and that we value what went on in their childhood, and they'll remember being at that bookstore, being in that courtyard, being at that building, and having wonderful memories of it. I'd like to see that continued. I'd like to see it for my child and the children of my children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mills. Reagan Hecker is our next speaker. After that is Lucia Oswald.
Hi, I'm here also to support the designation of the Berry Building as a historical monument. Just wanted to say it's a community treasure. It's something we all love and have lived with for a long time, and I'd like to give the rest of my time to somebody who maybe has something more substantial to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Lucia or Lucia Oswald? Lucia Oswald? Should I speak? She passes? Okay. We'll just, we'll put you in the record. Melissa Hertz. Is Melissa Hertz here? Oh, here she comes. Take your time. Don't worry. You've got very important cargo there.
My name is Melissa Hertz, and I'm the granddaughter of the architect of the Berry Building, and this is my four-year-old son Liam, his great-grandson. And as I try to teach my children that there is value in history and our heritage, I would like to encourage you to support the historic designation of the Berry Building. Say thank you. Say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Schwartz is our next speaker. Stephen Schwartz. Stephen Schwartz here.
Yes, good morning. I'm Taylor Loudon, the architect representative on the Miracle Mile North Historic Preservation Overlay Zone Board. I've analyzed the Berry Building, and we have all agreed that it has importance far beyond its site, its surface, its style, and its apparently simple construction. It has significance. It's subtle, not distinct. The key point would be it's compliant with the California Office requirements for designation under the criteria of being a prototype of and an astounding example of a period-style architectural movement or construction. That is one of the more notable works or best surviving work in a region of a master architect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Katzenstein Sousa is our next speaker. After that is Sheri Saperstein.
Very quickly, I just want to say I'm involved with sustainable building and have worked over the last 15 years with Greenscreen. I'm the president, and we've been incorporating landscape and building. And this building, even though it was constructed over 50 years ago, meets many of the lead qualifications that people are striving to put into buildings today. And the importance of this cannot be underestimated as we are all trying to be more green. This building has a wonderful courtyard, which is exemplary for Los Angeles, and I just wanted to say thank you. Please designate.
Thank you very much. Sheri Saperstein is next. If there's no objection, I'll extend the comments for two minutes. We just have two cards left after this.
Hello, I'm Sheri Saperstein. I worked for 13 years at the Getty Conservation Institute, and as Mahasy Afshar, another Getty Conservation Institute veteran, has said, "Landmarks let people share a sense of place, identity, and cohesiveness, literally and figuratively. Without them, we are alone. With them, we are a community."
Maria Dante Brown. After that will be Bill Delvac.
Thank you. I'm here to, my name is Maria Dante Brown, and I'm here to support the designation as a historical monument of the Berry Building. I'm a member of the Brentwood Hills Homeowners Association, here also on behalf of my husband, who's a member of the board of the Brentwood Hills Homeowners Association. I know there's many members of our homeowners group that also very much support the designation and appreciate everyone's hard work. The Berry Building, you've heard, is unique already. I spent a warm summer evening there at a Harry Potter party, and that was written up in National Magazine, Dutton's, you know, the courtyard, and the event was there. I know that a few months before that, I walked through there to get SAT books for my kids, and there's John Kerry speaking in the courtyard about his latest book, and this is not unusual occurrences for this building. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And lastly, Bill Delvac.
Honorable councilmembers, William Delvac, on behalf of the owner, Charles Munger. Mr. Munger regrets that he could not be here today, although we are joined by his colleagues, Jim Rosenfield and Maria Camacho. At the outset, Mr. Munger was quite surprised to learn that anyone in the community thought the building was historic. In fact, in his view, all along, he has opposed the designation. We're here today in the interest of working with the council office and the community to not oppose the designation at this time in the interest of having, in the interest of having a good dialogue in the future. Mr. Munger is looking forward to the future. We hope the city and the neighbors are too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, we appreciate all of our public comment. We appreciate people taking time out of their schedules. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the Brentwood community for coming out and the numbers that you have and articulating your position from both a cultural and historic standpoint and also from a Dutton bookstore and from a community concern about what happens next with their great community. I want to thank Mr. Delvac for the kind comments he said about Mr. Munger. We are looking forward to getting with Mr. Munger and coming up with a plan that we all can work with. There is 180-day window where hopefully it can all be resolved in that period. If it can't, we'll go for another 180 days. But the goal is, as Louise Frankel said earlier, she's of the same age as Charlie Munger, we want to get this done as quickly as possible so we all can enjoy the benefits of it, and I appreciate everybody's attitude about a win-win-win. Council, I would like your support on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No other council members wish to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all. Mr. Reyes has asked for item 53 out of order. If there's no objection to taking item 53 out of order, let's go ahead and we'll take that next. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes on item 53. Mr. Reyes? 53.
Thank you, Council Presidents. Colleagues, I'd like to ask the city staff, as well as the president of our deputy mayor, Mr. Frank, to join us at the center table. Colleagues, this is an effort that has taken about, almost over a year, and it's an effort that speaks to our ability as a city to understand our capacity to impact our own city in a constructive way and in a way where we can drive our resources into communities of need. In many ways, each one of our communities is like a bucket full of holes in that we leak out and lose resources because we're not able to plug them up and keep the resources back into our neighborhoods and into our city. This is one of those efforts that allows us to fill those holes. And I want to thank Mr. Patrick Burns and Mr. Daniel Fleming, President of LA Economic Roundtable, who in very broad strokes conducted a study where he finds that a purchase of goods and services by the city of LA have an economic impact of about $3.5 billion annually, generating more than 34,000 jobs, according to the Economic Roundtable. However, more than one-third of the funds, $1.1 billion, possibly 10,000 jobs, go to businesses operating outside the LA county. So our own funds in the city are being lost into areas outside the city. So how do we capture it? And how do we capture in such a way where we start a comprehensive approach in dealing with our quality of life? In an hour, we'll have a ribbon-cutting of Homeboy Industries facility in Chinatown. And I continue to echo his words, that nothing stops a bullet better than a job, and this is one of those opportunities. With the help of Mr. Frank and everyone at the table, and I'll ask you to introduce yourselves right now, we've been able to put together a strategy, an ordinance, that takes us away from a posture in which our own city staff has to go with hand in hand, asking, pleading for cooperation by department heads and by the private sector, and how are they performing and making sure that we're able to recycle our resources, we're able to create the nexus, the economic and social nexus that draws together the availability of funds for the creation of jobs. And that is the essence of this effort. It changes the culture in this city. It's the beginning of that change. We've got great cooperation from our mayor, Antonio Varegosa, and we were able to pass and put forth that assessment and the performance of our departments and how are they handling their budgets and making sure the funds come back in. And this is the legal mechanism that gives the department heads not only a real clear indication that it's important, but it gives our staff the capacity, the legal basis by which we can move forward and demand that type of performance, where we can create jobs in our own city for the areas of need. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Frank to share a few words, and if he can, once you're done, sir, the rest staff can introduce themselves. Thank you.
I just wanted to come here to thank the Ad Hoc Gang Committee, to thank all of you, to thank Councilman Reyes for your leadership on this. This is a work that's three years in the making, far beyond this administration's arrival this work began, and I'm here to thank your leadership for this moving forward. It's, works hand in glove with the local higher efforts that we're sort of trying to move as well in the city, and it's a piece of work that we have started out at the airport. Since December, we have a first-hand system starting up at Lawa, and it's a relationship-based system. I'll ask a little bit for patience as we put the rules and regulations together to make it a functional system in the city, but I really truly believe this is one of a handful of workforce development tools that is an absolute next step for the city in trying to figure out how we provide the kind of jobs, the good jobs we have in the city to people that live here in Los Angeles.
And I want to thank Mr. Frank because I know with his leadership, the leadership of Councilman Perry, Councilman Parks, they're working on the construction side of this, which is a whole different animal, a whole different track of intricate and which is a whole different animal, a whole different track of intricate and delicate details. But I also want to thank Councilman Weston and his cooperation facilitating this and Councilman Cardenas as the Chair of the Ad Hoc Gang and being able to work with me and work with the staff and moving this forward. And as Councilman Han moves forward on her effort to put together this, essentially bring to task our own issues of how do we invest in our youth, that perhaps as we continue these models, we can demonstrate and prove how the city is ready to move forward in creating these kinds of programs. So with that, Mr. Sein.
Robert Sein, AGM, Community Development Department. And this is one major tool that we could use from our economic development tool bag, but really to use it to the benefit of our community residents. First-source hiring will allow us to identify and use our workforce development system to be able to bring residents to job opportunities from city dollars. And I think that's a major and much important step. I really have to thank you, Mr. Reyes, Councilman Reyes, for your efforts and leadership in moving this forward.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. John Reamer, Inspector of Public Works, the Director of the Bureau of Contract Administration. And I too want to thank you, Councilman Reyes, and Councilman Cardenas, all those who have participated in this effort. They say the most important step in a long journey is the first step, and this is the first step in a very important journey that we as a city will be taking to provide what I like to refer to as hope for those who would say they are looking at a hopelessness situation in their life. So once again, thank you very much and we're just pleased and honored to be a part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Reamer, for your hard work.
Laurel Lightner for the City Attorney's Office, and it's been a pleasure working with all of you on this.
Ted Jordan from the City Attorney's Office, and I seconded everything that people have said here.
Thank you. I do know Councilman Cardenas has some questions. Want to make sure we have the staff here and hope we can move forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that we're not too premature on any celebrations because we have yet to get involved in the effort of actually having wholesale job opportunities in place on the ground for all the people that we've been trying to work toward giving them those opportunities. So if somebody could please let me know how it's going with your evaluation or reevaluation about how much men and women power you need on this side of the table so that we can actually meet the demand as we are trying to grow the demand of people coming toward us to say, I would like a job and actually finding places for them to get a job. My turn.
John Reamer, Bureau of Contract Administration. We view this as a partnership effort between our bureau and the Community Development Department at the Bureau of Contract Administration. We've looked at what we've been asked to do from the standpoint of monitoring and providing oversight to ensure that accountability exists in this process. One of the things that we've heard from the community is that at times there is a lack of credibility when we come up with things like this. So it's very important for us to ensure that we have the data to show how well we're doing or where we need to improve. At the very onset, we know that we will need at least one individual to spend a dedicated amount of time putting together rules and regulations for this ordinance. And then from a very conservative approach, we're looking at at least two other staff members if we approach this without technology. And what I mean by that is there are several ordinances that we have in our bureau right now that are somewhat familiar and that would dovetail nicely into this ordinance. So having a technological piece wrapped into this would take us to a fourth person. We feel that we could get a good start on this. We've looked at, on average, going back about three years, the number of contracts that would fit in this category, and it's in the area of 320 contracts right now. But let me caution all of us on this. I can't say that that's a solid number because many of the contracts that we need to know about, we don't. And that comes from our wanting to go out and share with other departments, A, the need to let us know about these contracts and educate, if you will, staff members that change in various departments about the need to provide us information regarding these contracts. So the number could go up. How high it could go up, it would be irresponsible of me to give you a number. I asked staff that this morning and they said roughly maybe 25%. So that might move it up to 400. This does not include proprietary departments, which means that the airport and the harbor and DWP aren't a part of this. If they were, the number would go much higher. But I want to believe that as we demonstrate how successful this can be, and as Mr. Frank's already alluded to, those departments see the value in having a first-source approach, that we will work hand in hand as well. And so right now, to answer your question, we're looking at three without technology support, four with technology support.
Okay. Because back in the day, there was a comic and he was called the Unknown Comic and he would show up with a bag over his head. It was a joke. But the last thing I want is for all of the efforts that we agree with in this city, that we do have the opportunity and need to afford people the opportunity to get into these career placements. These jobs exist, they're going to continue to exist, but who's getting them? Are Angelinos getting these jobs? Are people who are living in tough communities where there's a high unemployment rate, are they getting these jobs? But my main point is, are we going to be the unknown job provider? As in, we who wear ties every day and dress the way we do and talk about these things, are we going to be able to get the word on the street on those streets where this information belongs? Are we going to be able to get that word on the street so that those individuals who do need the jobs, those individuals who belong in these jobs, are actually going to be afforded the opportunity, the real shot at getting one of these jobs? Because we're not giving these jobs. People have to apply for these jobs. People have to vie for these jobs. People have to show that they're ready for these jobs. Some of them are skilled jobs, some of them are entry-level jobs, et cetera. What are we doing to make sure that we have the word on the street that there are these entry-level jobs and these very well-paying skilled-level jobs in these communities?
Councilman, currently, there's about 130,000 community residents, and that's 18 and over, that come through our Works Source Development System. This is one--
130,000 during what period of time?
Annually, annually. And that's been on average. And then about another 10,000 that come through our youth centers. So about 140,000 individuals that we impact on an annual basis. On average, they come back 2.5 times. So we know that we do get a number of repeat customers coming through our centers. The important part--
So hold on a second. You have about 140,000, an average 2.5 times. That's over 300,000 contacts a year--
Yes, sir.
--with these individuals?
Yes.
Just on the front end?
Just on the front end.
That's not necessarily follow-up after that?
Exactly.
If they actually apply for a job and we're helping them understand how to interview, et cetera, that's different than those 300,000 contacts?
Yes, sir.
What's the budget that we have in the city of Los Angeles for those 300,000 contacts?
We have expended approximately $17 million right now on our workforce development system and another $10 million on our youth system.
Does anybody know what the public benefit is if we put 1,000 people to work? The economic public benefit if we put 1,000 people to work?
Good question. I'm sure we could ask--
Okay, continue while somebody tries to find that. Go ahead.
But this is one instance where we're going to be using our city system to be able to reach out and connect the programs. I think one of the things that we've tried very hard within the city is to actually bring departments together so we're actually talking as a city with one voice. So as a resident in Sun Valley or a resident in East Los Angeles or a resident in South Los Angeles walks into a center, they can know of all the job opportunities the city has to offer. They'll be able to have access and information upfront. What is the biggest barrier that many of our residents, especially in our low-income communities, is access to information? And because they don't have internet in their homes. If you look at the rate of internet access in poor communities. So they have to come to these centers. They don't have access to be able to apply for jobs through the internet, which almost all job placement is going to. So our 17 Works Source Centers, our 13 Youth Centers, really play that key, important role for that 130, 140,000 folks walking in. Being able to link this information and our job recruitment efforts, both from what the city is doing to hiring, as well as the jobs created in the private sector, providing them that first shot before it goes out to the public. That's what we're, that's what this ordinance is doing, is giving our residents a first shot at these jobs before it goes public.
If we're successful in actually moving people toward jobs and getting contractors to actually consider and eventually hire these people who are going through the Works Source Centers, et cetera, with our, through our proprietary departments or directly with the city or what have you, if we're successful, the way we've been talking about how we want to be successful, are we going to need more bodies on this side of the table?
Yes, I think that's going to be a good sign of success. One of the reasons why we're doing this in partnership--
I asked you, are we going to need more bodies?
Yes, sir. Yes. On the CDD side, in terms of the implementation, we're actually looking at utilizing our current workforce system, but we are asking, or will be asking through the budget process, three additional staff members to concentrate on the implementation of this program as a startup.
And if we continue to grow, you may be asking for additional staff members throughout the years going forward. So it's not a stagnant process, nor is it a stagnant funding process to make sure that we have an effective system.
Exactly. We are actually utilizing our workforce development system and our current funds as our basis to move forward. So utilizing that system is going to be no net cost to the city.
Bottom line is, ladies and gentlemen, for the city of Los Angeles to spend $17 million in order to try to put hundreds, if not thousands, of people in contact with places where they can go to work, without question, I challenge any economist to say that if we're doing that right, that we are wasting money. I challenge any individual to try to quantify and qualify how that is not a good use of dollars. Because for every hundred people, every thousand people we put to work, we are saving millions upon millions of dollars in social services, millions upon millions of dollars in other services at every level of government that comes out of the same pockets of Angelinos if we don't address this issue. So I want to make sure that you understand how important it is that you are successful and that's why we keep having hearing after hearing on this matter and meeting after meeting on this matter. Because as a policy body, I don't think there's anybody in this room on this side of the table who is actually in disagreement that we need to make this effective and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, when we talk about leveraging and we talk about changing culture, this has not come easy. This has been almost five years in the works, just on the dialogue stage, trying to understand how departments work. The hard work of the staff here, we've been able to get essentially a magnifying glass and spoke to how we analyze this process. So I appreciate the questions from Councilman Cardenas. When we start talking about leveraging potential, you start asking the question, how do we use our own capacity to change ourselves? You will see that we need to take significant steps in changing the culture of the departments and how the management views not only itself, but how it views its resources, its implementation, and how to recycle those dollars in the city. So yes, we need to put this to the test and yes, we will have some weaknesses, but with time, we will strengthen it and it'll be demonstrated by the jobs that will be created. So again, I ask you, I vote, and I again thank the staff for their hard work and never giving up. It's been a long haul, but we're finally here and you shouldn't celebrate yet. Let's see that annual report and see what happened within that 12-month period. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council should also direct the city clerk to place on a continuation agenda for tomorrow the ordinance, the amended ordinance.
Okay. A lot of objection. I will direct that. And second from Ms. Gruel. If there's no objection, we will now take a vote on this. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And I'll move forward and we will see the ordinance tomorrow. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item 42, called special by Councilmember Zein.
Mr. Zein, item number 42 is before us. I'd like to recognize Mr. Zein at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the matter on Tenny Pierce. And looking at the paperwork on this, it shows that in addition to the issue of an outside counsel, there was a $750,000 cap on the outside counsel. And as I understand, and I'd like to hear from the City Attorney's Office on this, the bill is $1.3 million. And all we appropriated on the motion, January 19, 2007, approved the hiring of a law firm of Jones Day to assist with the Pierce matter and transfer funds to pay for the contract in an amount of up to $750,000 from the unappropriated balance, et cetera. So what I read is that it's a $1.3 million bill. We only appropriated, or I should say, we only, we appropriated $750,000. So I have a question regarding that, which is all part of this Tenny Pierce settlement. And I know that the city attorney may have a response to that. In addition, I've put in another motion asking for analysis of this particular bill and who was monitoring this particular bill in this particular case.
If I could just frame the agenda description, this is regarding appropriation of funds for the settlement.
This is all part of it.
It's regarding payment of outside counsel. Is tangentially related?
Yes, it is related.
Just tangentially, you could just--
Well, can we get an answer to the question that we put $750,000 up to and we have a bill for $1.3 million in this particular case? I mean, I submitted a secondary motion asking an analysis, but before that bill is paid, and I would ask that that bill not be paid on the attorney cost, attorney fees on this particular settlement, because it's all in that big basket of Tenny Pierce. The money that has been approved for the settlement as well as the attorney costs.
We will appropriately respond to your motion that you submitted. And if we have the answer on short notice to your question now, we could provide it. If not, we will respond to your other motion.
Okay, question, Mike Clayson from the City Attorney's Office. Your first question was the amount of outside counsel fees expended so far. Was that correct?
Well, the amount that we in the motion at this body approved, when we approved outside counsel, $750,000, and what I have read, the bill of $1.3 million, I believe it was, that was submitted by Jones Day.
Right. We haven't, we haven't seen Jones Day's final bills yet. Their best estimate is that they will probably bill the city in the neighborhood of $1.1 million in fees plus about $250,000 in costs.
Now, how do we do that when there was a cap on this?
Well, I can't address the issue of a cap. Clearly, the motion I think that you're looking at talks--
Mr. Garcetti has a comment to make. Mr. Soundman. Mr. Garcetti.
I'll hold your time, Mr. Zein.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification on that. I've talked directly to Jones Day's lawyer. It will be lower than the 1.35 that was represented. It will be 1.2 or lower.
Well, and I understand that, but my concern is, I don't think this body--
I'm just establishing that for the record.
Thank you. I don't think this body approved anything over the 750. I know the settlement discussion was a specific amount that was approved by this body. I did not vote for that. I don't support that. But over and above that, there's this secondary issue. Who approved the additional compensation or the additional cap from $750,000?
As you indicated, the council motion was for $750,000 for Jones Day.
Yet was there any other subsequent motion or any other direction that came back to this body to increase that to a higher level?
Not at the moment, but I am sure that there will be.
And what if this body does not approve that?
Well, I can't address that issue. Jones Day has incurred these costs, they've incurred these fees. I think that the process of negotiation as to what their final bills will be and whether or not all of the items in their final bills will be approved is a certain ongoing process that's not finalized yet, so it's probably premature to talk about that.
So the bill has not been submitted?
That's correct.
And how would I ask the bill not be paid until this body reviews that bill? Would I do that now? Would I do it with a separate motion? What would be your suggestion, Mr. City Attorney?
It's not what's on the agenda today and--
But it's associated with this. There's a thin connection.
Our office regularly on outside counsel bills will come before Budget and Finance Committee for approval of costs. And I'm sure when there's another bill submitted by Jones Day, our office or the CAO actually will come forward with a request for payment. At that time, I would think that'd be an appropriate time for you to voice your displeasure.
So what you're telling me is no money has been paid to Jones Day at this time?
I believe all that's been appropriated is $750,000. Anything above that, there'd have to be a new appropriation.
And that was not done yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I have for this.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Rosendahl?
I just wanted to have that same clarity. I know in my briefing, it mentions this Jones Day business, but that is a separate item to be discussed at a separate matter. That's why we put that motion in to question all of those-- That's why we put that motion in, to question all of those funds used, and we'll save that for another matter. But again, it's 1,430,000 is the amount of the settlement?
That's my understanding, yes.
And then I see another 60,000 in back pay so that Pierce can qualify for his pension?
That's correct.
And what kind of a pension will he get when he gets that 60,000?
Well...
How much money are we talking about?
I don't know. I think that's something you probably need to address with the CAO's office. I'm not prepared to answer that question at the moment.
Is anybody here that can answer that one?
I don't know.
From what I understand, he obviously had 19 years as a firefighter, and we bridged his last year so that he's eligible for 20 years, which then is a retirement pension.
Yes.
And I've heard figures upwards of a million dollars. Could that possibly be true?
My understanding is that bridging Mr. Pierce to his 20-year pension would not cost anywhere near that, would be closer to those 60,000. I think the million dollars is the value of the pension, a 20-year pension. Now, keep in mind that Mr. Pierce has contributed to his pension for 19 years. So I think the million dollars is probably the value of the pension, but not what the city would actually pay for pension benefits.
Of course, I understand that, but just for people to understand, that those of us who are not forgiving him that money do realize that he will have a retirement pension roughly of a million dollars for over his lifetime.
Well, again, Mr. Pierce has contributed to his pension for his entire career here.
Correct. I understand. But I just want to make it clear that that is a generous pension. Most people in the private sector for 20 years don't get a pension like that, but it's good. We believe our firefighters should be treated right, and so therefore the pension makes sense. But people need to know, there's a pension. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
I move the previous question.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti has moved the previous question.
Point of information on that. One can vote either way, but this is legally binding on the city after the mayor's signature and Mr. Pierce's council signatures on it. So to not pay it would be in violation of the law.
Mr. City Attorney?
We're voting on the...
Do you have your motion?
No, no, I have no motion. This is to appropriate the funds, which we're legally obligated to do.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to make a comment on the record?
Actually, he moved the previous question. I don't think there's any clarification needed. If there is, I'll be available.
All right. Thank you very much. Do you want to open the roll?
Just to clarify, we're not voting on moving the previous question. If there's no objection, it's our practice that the question is moved.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
We got ten ayes, four noes.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item forty-four, called special for cards from the public.
Madam, the button is... Did you press your button?
No, I was going to ask if we could go to item number fifty-four.
I believe there's been a request to go in order to this particular item. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
I believe that was the request. Mr. Garcetti just stepped out for a few minutes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say again.
Mr. Garcetti asked for this item to go next.
Which item, fifty-four?
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Mr. Garcetti wants fifty-four to go next. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. If we could have staff come to the table. City Attorney and colleagues, and Mr. Parks was in committee, and I know Mr. Garcetti is interested in this issue as well. I think the bottom line for those of us who are asking questions in the committee and colleagues, this is on the Hollywood and Highland parking contract agreement. And I think the issue before us now is not about who was selected, it is from the questions it was, how do we ensure that the owners of the property and the REA that was signed previously in the development of the project initially, that there is protection to ensure, number one, that the individuals who go into the parking structure, that they are going to get in and out, and it's not a problem, and particularly to ensure when there are vents and other kinds of things that we know now, the parking is not up to our standards. And so the questions that we asked, I think, in the committee, and if I could ask the department and city attorney, whomever needs to respond to these, were related to how do we ensure two things. One, that if there is the REA that was originally discussed, or excuse me, originally signed, still in effect. And two, if there's any disagreement between that, between the current parking provider suggested and the owners of the property and the City of Los Angeles, how are those disputes resolved? And then I would just ask that my time be held, and whomever needs to respond.
Would you like me to go first? Okay. Amir Sadadi, Assistant General Manager, LADOT. To answer some of the questions you asked, I think we'll be a tag team here with the department and city attorneys speaking on some of the questions. The first question that you had, Councilmember Grule, had to do with the REA, the Reciprocal Easement Agreement, and the REA was part of the request for proposal that was sent out and has been part of the draft contract that's before council. So we believe that the department has looked at the requirements within the REA as it's been worked out through the draft contract. As far as the issue of operations, we are consistently working to make that garage be a garage where people, the public, can easily get in and easily get out, that we have a clean facility, a first-class facility, and we continue to do that. The issue today has to do more with the selection of a new operator to continue to move forward, and we've been doing that with the current operator, and we will do that with the future operator. The other question, I believe, had more of a legal taking...
Shelley Smith from the city attorney's office. The reciprocal easement agreement, which was made a part of the original development when Trisakon, the predecessor to CIM, was in place, is indeed operational, it is in effect. It was made a part of the RFP process, and it is a specific exhibit to the whatever eventually executed agreement will be signed between the city and whoever is selected as the new operator by this council. Both the operating agreement and the reciprocal easement agreement contain very specific dispute resolution procedures, and in talking to the department and all of the interested parties, I think the interests are clearly aligned in finding consensus. But the new agreement will allow and require specific consent from not just the hotel, but the retail, and each of them separately. So although CIM is currently running the hotel and is currently the retail property owner, each of those entities or portions of the CIM operation will be stakeholders, and we will need, all parties will need consent to make modification to the operations, and I know the department is committed to obtaining those consents.
And I'd like to ask Mr. Garcetti to take the lead. Mr. Garcetti?
Ms. Grule, I will hold your time. Mr. Garcetti, please go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, we had a little interview in the back. Thank you very much, Ms. Grule, and thank you, Madam President. Just before, a few questions. This is a very important item to me, colleagues in Council District 13. The Hollywood and Highland development is obviously a huge asset for the city, and the garage is a huge part of what we own there alongside with the Kodak Theater. It's been vital to the economic development of Hollywood and a big spur to the movement, not only through its construction, but through the new owners that bought the project a few years ago, CIM. Having a new operator come into the garage and make technological upgrades and other operational improvements is a good thing. It'll help ensure that people have a positive experience, and we really, I appreciate everybody's focus on that customer, because that's where we should all be focused on. We're part of a business enterprise here and part of a community, and it's critical that people have a positive experience when they visit Hollywood and park in this facility. I know the RFP process has been very drawn out. We've received a number of quality responses to the RFP, and New South Parking is the respondent that's been recommended by DOT. I did want to clarify some of the issues building on this, and I wanted to assure the Hollywood community, our stakeholders, the businesses, CIM and others, that what's first and foremost in my mind is to make sure that we, first of all, take care of our taxpayer duty with a huge garage long term. So beyond this, it's a discussion I've been having with Department of Transportation about, should this be a garage that the city owns? We need to make sure that there is public ownership of, or public management, excuse me, of a positive parking experience. But we all know that the entire city is contributing right now to Hollywood, as it did in years past to Westwood, long before Mr. Weiss was there, as it shifts around the city to different parts where we take all of our special parking revenue funds. And really, to me, that is the longer-range planning. It's not on the agenda here today, but a critical part of that conversation that I wanted to bring to my colleagues' attention as we look at something that right now we pay a lot into, it does a great good for the economic vitality of Hollywood, but nevertheless needs to be planned more carefully. The issues I'd like to clarify, I understand that CIM and the owner, which owns both the retail and the hotel components, and I appreciate distinguishing between that, they've been concerned that they would not have the ability to request additional staffing in the parking facility. And I want to thank Jane Berner and David Gershwin and other folks in my staff who have been in conversations with CIM. And this concern has been expressed using a lot of technological terminology concerning this reciprocal easement agreement for the property that we don't all have to get into detail about, but I would like to keep the discussion simple here to get to the root of what the issue is. Can staff in the city attorney please clarify what the authority of the owners is? If we do make that change, and I appreciate that of having both retail and hotel components of Hollywood and Highland Center, what do they have to do to request additional staffing in the garage?
I think the contract certainly allows them to do that, and in discussions that I had with council for CIM yesterday, as well as the department, we have agreed that when they ask for additional staffing, and there are events that necessitate additional staffing, that the city will bear the costs of that additional staffing, and we are willing to build into the operating agreement with a new operator those downside protections, if you will, those cost protections for the hotel and for the retail owners.
And I think all of us who use that garage know, a lot of this can be achieved with technology. Our current operator, we drive through, and there's got to be one of the worst jobs in Los Angeles to be stuck in that garage for six hours going like this to people, and we could have signage and technology that will achieve that. So I'd really like to impress upon DOT and assure CIM, the operator, that we're going to be looking at those technological elements too. My staff is going to be very much on top of this, and I would appreciate those amendments to put that downside protection in there. I also understand that CIM has asked that the draft operating agreement language be modified to clarify. They will not be responsible for the cost of that staff, so if we have that in there, I believe that that will address that, and can you confirm that would indeed be the case?
We have made that commitment, and the department has confirmed they are willing to have that commitment made.
Okay. And that will be worked out in the operating agreement?
We will amend the operating agreement before it is executed between the city and New South.
Great, okay. And I know there was a series of five changes. One of them, I think, was not relevant, in my opinion, one, three, and five, we can incorporate the sections 1.2D, section 3.5, and the following language for the draft operating agreement about nothing contained here and shall serve to modify the obligations of the city, et cetera. And those three, we're able to accommodate in?
We discussed that we would certainly be willing to exchange language which preserve the rights, responsibilities, and affirmative defenses of all the parties, should there be an unresolved dispute in the future. We honestly don't believe that with the dispute resolution procedures available to us, that that will ever be the case.
Okay. The integrity of this process, I know Ms. Grule, myself, others have looked at, there has been integrity to the process, I appreciate that. From a planning perspective, we can also appreciate that there are very few malls out there, very few shopping centers where those folks don't control the parking, and so I can understand also the unease with CIM. That's where the city and where city leadership is going to step in, because we are the bridge between operations, between the winning RFP in this case, and the folks that are there. The last thing I want to see happen is that more traffic is caused or people never come back because we fail one way or the other with parking. So I make that assurance to the business community in Hollywood and to CIM today. And as that preview of coming attractions, colleagues, too, I will be looking at coming back and working with Department of Transportation, as we have been discussing for the past year and a half, what we do with this piece of property that we all own. If we freed up tens of millions of dollars to spread around the rest of the city, I don't think this horseshoe would oppose that sometime in the future, as long as we'd have the guarantees, which I've talked to CIM about, and I believe them very deeply, that they will continue to be part of a parking district. In fact, Shao Kuba, who's one of the principals at CIM, has been one of the driving forces in the community behind a parking district that would be public-private, modeled after what we've seen in Pasadena, which I know Amir is very familiar with as well. So with that, I ask for those changes to be moved in that we discussed and for your support today. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Grule.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Parks? Oh, Ms. Grule, I'm sorry. Ms. Grule, I was holding time, and then, yes.
I just want to, again, acknowledge Mr. Garcetti and all the efforts that he has made and his staff in this, and to get to a point in which we can't ultimately deal with the customer, which benefits all of the above. So just want to second that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like, and maybe this will be a rehash, but just for clarity, one of the things that's been brought to our attention is that the issue, or was viewed as the issue when the REA was in place, was ironclad, that the members could meet, make the changes and such. Now, the impression, or at least what's been expressed to us, is that they now have to ask for permission. Is that the case, or how do changes go about mechanically and operationally to get a change in the operational plan?
During the terms and conditions of the operating agreement call for all stakeholders to agree to changes in the operating plans. So during the life of the contract, the parking operator, the Department of Transportation, the hotel, and the retail, if there are to be changes or if there are changes sought, they will need to consent. And I think all parties contemplate that that will be the case.
And so, from your perspective, is it much different than what was in place in the REA and what we're now talking about as part of the contract?
The reciprocal easement agreement is a separate document, and it has also been made a portion of the operating agreement going forward. Changing the terms and conditions of the reciprocal easement agreement are different and more technical than making changes during the contract life of the operating agreement. But one has been, in fact, incorporated into the other.
Okay. And then give me, again, the process that if I, as one of the owners, wanted to make that change and had a dispute, how do I resolve that dispute without going to lengthy arbitration or court and all that? How do I work within the city process to get the changes?
I think Mr. Sadadi might be better equipped to talk about the practical operational issues there.
Councilmember, our goal would be, again, as Council President Garcetti mentioned, to serve the public, and we would, through normal, regular meetings scheduled with the owner of both the retail and the hotel, we would work through any of those challenges. If there are requests for staffing, requests regarding the valet, requests regarding anything that, again, operationally would benefit, that that's something that we would work through. Our goal isn't to agree to disagree on operational issues. We would commit to coming to a compromise and/or a consistent approval process so we can work those issues through operationally. I'm not sure legally if there is additional disputes, but our goal, from, again, serving the public, the visitors to Hollywood and Highland, would be to make the best changes possible to make the experience of someone parking there as good as possible so they return to the facilities.
Because it's actually a benefit to the city that people who visit find it enjoyable... Because it's actually a benefit to the city that people who visit find it enjoyable and come back because the city benefits financially, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Explain briefly for us this issue that you talked about, how we're willing to absorb if there's additional costs. How would the city absorb that? And in the agreement, it's not being pushed to the owners of the property, but how would the city absorb that?
The city would be doing what it typically does now in the parking lot. That is to say that if a special event occurs, if additional parking is needed, we hope, not just Councilman Garcetti, but all of us hope, that the hotel and all the retail properties there at Hollywood and Highland are successful, and we have a lot more cars going in and out. I doubt that the hotel or the retail owner will have to actually request. But if they do, then the department, should it agree, and under those circumstances, I can't see any reason why they would not, the department would, in fact, be requesting the parking operator to increase staff and increase service. And that would be a regular expected expense of the parking structure, which would be absorbed by the city. Of course, it would be offset by the additional revenues from the additional business coming through.
Very good. Ms. Smith, you've seen the September 27 letter that was sent in. On the five recommendations that they offer, have you addressed them in some fashion in the contract?
I have, well, I have addressed all of them in discussions with the attorneys for CIM, as well as discussed these with the attorneys for New South. And Councilman Garcetti, I believe, summarized the acknowledgement, concessions, and revisions that we felt it was in the best interest of the city and the parties to agree to modify in the proposed draft contract. And we did those, and we are willing to do those.
The issue that in discussions, what is their reference point to go back to those discussions if their pieces of the discussion are not in the contract? How do they go back and memorialize what those verbal agreements are?
We have not, in fact, drafted a final operating agreement that we expect to execute with New South. The direction and action that is being requested before this honorable body is to delegate to the general manager to finally negotiate and execute such a contract. We will commit to revising the proposed draft that the parties have reviewed to date and incorporate the changes that have been discussed today.
Okay. And there's at least some issues in their letter that philosophically the city doesn't agree with?
That's true.
Okay. And so those, we have no expectation will be in the contract with New South?
That is correct.
Okay. So the issue is those that we have come to some conclusion, we expect that New South would be given guidelines on how the city expects them to manage these issues?
That is correct.
Okay. And in every instance, you have a comfort level that there's resolution if there's conflict?
I do.
Okay. The other issue I was going to ask you, could you comment, because it was very legally written, about how the REA could be changed, and it had to be by three parties, and then it had to be recorded in some official capacity? Is that something that we agree is part of that? Or is there another method that we found to address that issue?
I don't think the issue of making amendments to the reciprocal easement agreement is a dispute or an issue that would preclude the city council today from moving forward to make a contract selection. And I think all the attorneys who have taken a look at this issue have agreed to disagree.
Okay. That's one of the issues that we agree to disagree on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Cardenas?
I'm getting more confused as this conversation goes on. What exactly is the effect, the cause and effect of your statement, these attorneys have agreed to disagree? Please explain to us the relevance of what you just said to this particular proceeding. My time, please.
I don't...
President?
Go ahead.
I don't think that that is necessarily relevant to the particular action that is before you today. Counsel for CIM have raised questions about the process or procedures whereby the reciprocal easement agreement may be amended. We have indicated that the reciprocal easement is a part of the contract and will continue to be a part of the contract.
Okay. Now, so what you're saying is, when you contract with this company to do the parking for this facility, included in that contract is going to be an attachment of the contract for the operation of, excuse me, not the operation, but the master agreement with all parties present in that facility?
Yes, that will be the case. All of the documentation, the reciprocal easement agreement is one. There are a variety of other applicable documents that will govern the relationship going forward.
Are you saying that you're confident that even though perhaps custom and practice, between the time this building was, this facility was built and operated to date, that that custom and practice is in no way causing any ambiguities or any misunderstandings going forward with the future operator of the parking lot?
I would never say that documents drafted in 1990 aren't subject to interpretation in 2007. I do believe, however, that dispute resolution procedures and the governing principles by which the parties will manage themselves will resolve this during the life of the And that any dispute or interpretation that differs between the parties is not relevant to making the contract decision today and being confident that the city should not be precluded from making a contract selection. These issues will play themselves out with all the parties having the rights and responsibilities that they have over the next five years as the parking lot is operated. They have nothing to do with the parking operator's selection decision, which is before you today.
So what you're saying is, it's my understanding that some of the custom and practice of the operation of the parking lot as it is today had been relaxed or what have you, and certain activities may have been slightly different than what were in the original contract. My point to you is, the understanding of the party, is it clear to the party that they shouldn't be looking toward those custom and practices? They should be looking to the agreement in order to interpret what level of service it is going to be expected of?
I would characterize the agreement and the document a little bit differently. But rather than trying to be too technical about it...
Don't worry. Continue. Whatever makes you feel comfortable, I want to hear it.
I'm very comfortable that the operating documents will give sufficient direction to all of the stakeholders, that they will not only understand their rights and responsibilities, but that the operation can be a living one. So that plans that were made back in the 90s are not what the city and all the parties are stuck with in 2007, 2008. Obviously, all of the documents in the operating agreement envision the idea of making modifications. To use a small example, you wouldn't want to necessarily be paying 10 parking lot attendants to sit around and do absolutely nothing, wasting money. So clearly, the department, the retail owner, the hotel owner, and the parking operator need to be, and I believe they are, in the position of allowing these documents to be living ones and allowing amendments to occur. And every single governing document allows for amendments and revisions to take place.
Wonderful. Thank you. That gives me clarity on one half. But the other half is, is there anything in the RFP process, is there anything in the dialogue that's been documented that the future operator, should we approve this today, the future operator would, could be able to interpret and say, no, 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 that's not what we bid? You may have this other agreement that was here since 1990, but that's not what we bid. We bid this level of operation, this level of requirement. Is there anything in that process that would cause that kind of confusion or that kind of debate?
I don't think it should.
I don't believe... I didn't ask you if it should or shouldn't. It shouldn't. Let's just get that clear. It should not. Is there anything in that process that would cause somebody to come back and say, I'm sorry, that's not the level of service we understood?
I can't speak for someone else, council member coming and indicating they had a different understanding.
How long have you been involved in this RFP process? What's your involvement in this RFP process?
I assisted in reviewing it, and I gave legal advice to the department, the protest, appeal proceeding in the commission, as well as the transportation committee. I also met with the attorneys for all of the interested parties.
Sounds like you've been very involved. And based on your involvement, is there anything that you can see that would cause that kind of debate, that kind of misunderstanding?
There can always be misunderstanding between parties, but...
I'm not asking you if they will or will not. I'm asking you to reflect and consider the issues that were dialogued, the issues that were of contention, the issues that were clarified, the issues that you were involved in. Any of those things, are they tight now? Are they clarified?
I believe so.
You feel comfortable and confident that they're clarified to that degree?
I do.
Okay. Thank you. See, I was asking you your opinion, not their opinion, or to guess for them. You were going to say something?
No, just to...
Same question to you, then.
No, it was just to follow on Ms. Smith's. With my involvement, I believe that those things have been ironed out, and we're confident that a team can work together in reaching all levels of consent on operations.
Wonderful. There was something that disturbed me when Mr. Parks was asking a question about verbal dialogue. All of those things were ironed out in writing? Were both parties acknowledged the point at which your understanding is from that point forward? Or just saying, oh, Fred, I understand how you misunderstood that, but you understand that we're on the same page? Yes, move on. That is the stuff that lawyers love. Because lawyers get paid by the hour based on how confusing and how many disputes we can have. So my point is, those things were ironed out. Both of you just clarified that those things have been ironed out to your comfort level. You're the point people for us, okay? Have they been ironed out in writing, black and white, point by point?
Yes, I believe that those have been accomplished.
Who owns this parking lot?
City of Los Angeles. City of Los Angeles.
So the bottom line is, in my personal opinion, the thing that I don't like, when we get private parties arguing with lawyers and things of that nature, the taxpayers end up footing the bill, when we all throw up our hands and say, sounds like there's so much ambiguity here that there's no right or wrong, therefore, let's just cover the difference. That's my concern.
I agree with that concern, Councilman Cardenas, and I believe that we have addressed it.
Okay. What's the process going forward after today? Should this pass, the motion that's before us, should this pass? What is the process going forward? Not for the council, for the process in and of itself.
Yes, we will begin a transition period, council member, where the new operator, if it was adopted today, would then meet with the current operator, Five Star. We've already began the transition plan, so there would be changes that occur for a smooth takeover. So the goal for the department would be to work with both the current and the new operator to make, and CIM in that matter, to make sure that the transition is as smooth as possible for the publics. So, you know, we work out all of the issues, you know, such a transition, staffing, equipment. So there's a lot of uniforms, there's a lot of detailed levels in our transition plan that we would begin immediately.
Okay. Now, again, that's half of the answer, because that's the street-level transition and activity after today. Now, what's the legal activity after today? I think you mentioned that a contract has not been signed with the new operator?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, what happens after today?
What we will do is, based on Councilman Garcetti's proposed direction, if it is adopted by the council, we will make those amendments to the proposed operating agreement. And we will ask the general manager of the department to execute that agreement with New South. And then all the operational steps that Mr. Sadadi has indicated will take place.
Okay. And once that has taken place, we're done as far as the agreement, it has been solidified, if it's been signed?
Correct.
That's the ratification process? So it does not come back to council?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, if I had some, after today, if I had some questions for you, as far as some things that I'd like to understand that are in the contract, that we have to adhere to as a city, that all parties have to adhere to, if I had some questions, who would I talk to after today?
I would say that I would be happy to volunteer, and I'm sure Mr. Sadadi would be happy to volunteer.
Okay. So I would speak to you two if I had some direct questions about some of the technicalities of the agreement that we're going to be signing, that the staff level is going to be signing into the future?
Yes.
We would be happy to assist you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Next speaker is Mr. Labange.
I call for the question on item 54.
Questions I'd like to...
I'm going to be excused. I wanted to vote on this, though. I mean, are there questions?
Okay. Hold on a second. Let me get an opinion from a city attorney. Mr. Labange has made a motion to call the question. Shall we...
Actually, it's not a legal issue, it's a clerical issue. Pursuant to council rules, the vote must be taken on the call for the question. 10 votes are required.
Let me ask a question. It could be one minute, Jack? All right, I'll call for the question.
Okay. All right, we'll open the roll. We can open the roll and see if it passes or not. Is that our option? Mr. Clerk, is that our option? 10 votes, aye, will close the debate? All right, do you want to open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, six noes.
All right, Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, colleagues. It's a very, it's a very technical issue. This, I mean, I've listened to the colloquy, and I've read what I can, and it's still, it's still a very technical, confusing issue. And I guess I want to follow up on Mr. Cardenas's and Mr. Parks's questions, and I want to do it for the reason articulated by Mr. Garcetti, I don't, he's here somewhere, which is, Mr. Garcetti mentioned the issue of the parking lot in Westwood, and he's absolutely right to mention that, because we have a parking lot in Westwood that's been funded by the city, and no one is happy with it, right? I mean, it's just, it's just the nature of Westwood, perhaps. But I guess I wanted to ask if Ms. Smith could give me some more clarification on precisely what the parties have agreed to, precisely what the disagreement is between the parties? If you could hold my time, please.
The reason I'm hesitating is, it almost requires framing an argument that the city doesn't feel is directly applicable, again, to the decision before you today, which is selecting the contractor and moving forward with the contract selection process. There appears to be a disagreement about how the reciprocal easement agreement, which was made a part of the original development, and which has been included in the RFP process, and which is being honored in the new operating agreement when it will be executed, in how that is amended.
Well, the argument, as I understand it from Alan Matkins, is that that reciprocal easement agreement has not been modified or changed. It's a matter of contract law, and I haven't had contract law for a while.
That is where we happen to disagree.
So their argument is that it has not been amended, and therefore, the staffing levels that were originally contemplated before need to carry over to a new contract. So have I, do I, have I at least isolated the issue correctly?
That is an argument they are making.
And the city's view of that at this point is what? That the contract was, in fact, amended over time?
The REA itself allows for the amendment of the reciprocal easement agreement. The disagreement is about the procedures whereby that amendment may carry on. Alan Matkins is claiming that a recordation at the county courthouse is necessary.
Okay.
Operationally... Operationally, it simply doesn't make much sense, and hasn't made much sense, for a staffing plan developed by a consultant, which was an exhibit to the reciprocal easement agreement to lock in stone the exact number of parking lot attendants and cashiers forever. CIM agreed to modify the parking staffing with the last parking operator, and all of the parties have been operating under those revised staffing plans. That is so the city is not paying for people who are not actually working.
So in a nutshell, and again, I, I did take contract law, but I've forgotten more of it than you have remembered.
Me too.
Is, is the essential argument here that the, that practice has, in effect, modified the terms of the contract? Is that what is being stated?
The contract hasn't been modified, one way or the other. The contract with the parking operator always allowed for the staffing plan to be changed. This technical legal argument is about a separate reciprocal easement agreement, which contained an exhibit by a consultant that had a certain staffing plan. And indeed, all parties have modified that staffing plan so that the parking operation can be cost-effective. All parties, including CIM, bid on the new parking staffing plan.
May I ask a question for, if it's not for Ms. Smith, maybe it's for the folks from DOT? What is, and this is following up on what Mr. Cardenas was asking, what is the timeline from here? If this vote is taken, what's the timeline? Or is there a deadline that requires this vote to be taken today? Just help me understand, just the time, key points in the timeline in this process?
Councilmember Weiss, the garage been on a month-to-month since 2004. The RFP process approximately taken almost two years, I believe, nearly two years. We just want to, from the department's perspective, as, as mentioned through some of the councilors, to provide the, the change in order for us to then make the necessary equipment and technology improvements, as, as Councilmember Garcetti mentioned. So for other timeliness or deadline, there are really no deadlines. The holiday season is coming. Garage transitions takes quite a bit of work and effort, so we believe from an operational standpoint, the sooner the council can give direction, the sooner the transition can happen, and therefore, it's not in the middle of a Thanksgiving and/or Christmas holiday season. So our reasons for the timeliness of it is more really on the operations and providing the necessary support to the public.
Well, I, well, I certainly understand that, and I certainly believe that Mr. Garcetti is, is, I mean, he's, there's no question, he's dead on correct in terms of the, the changes that need to be made. I'm just wondering, when I hear someone say that there's an agreement to disagree, and it involves a contract that might end up being the subject of a dispute, or a document that might end up being the subject of dispute, if there's no gun-to-the-head deadline, and you have lawyers on both sides who seem to be pretty good at working things out with one another, if, if it's absolutely and abundantly necessary to have a vote today, or if there's a way to try to, to try to accommodate all these concerns?
We believe that we have, Councilman Weiss. The revisions and modifications that Councilman Garcetti made reference to are exactly those. And in fact, the value of resolving this dispute to the property owner is protection, that, that the parking operation will be staffed properly, as a first-class facility, that there are enough staffers there, and that they will not be responsible for the costs of doing so, should there be a need to expand the staffing plan. The acknowledgements and revisions that I have indicated early in my presentation do exactly that. So resolving this dispute is not at all necessary.
Well, I, and I can say, I, I understand what you've said, I just, I just want to be able to understand that their position is that, you know, the contract is what it is, the REA is what it is, and it has to be modified in a certain manner. If it's not, it's not. And the city's position is that the city, through understanding the needs for maintaining this parking facility in a productive and, and manner that encourages commerce, is going to basically use its best efforts with the new operator to, to get those accommodations. Is that, am I characterizing that correctly?
That is correct. And as a matter of fact, it is likely that during the life of this contract, our staffing plan will well exceed that exhibit to the original reciprocal easement agreement. And we certainly would like to feel free to enhance the staffing without having to do recordation in the county courthouse every time we want to change that.
Well, I'm gonna ask Mr. Garcetti a question that I have, but I appreciate your responses.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Gruel for the second time?
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone's questions, because this is why we had a long discussion also in committee that day, and particularly asked, Mr. Weiss, we asked the city attorney to meet with both sides from last Wednesday, because we thought it was critically important that the kinds of discussions, and I believe some of the items that Mr. Garcetti had alluded to today were some of the discussions that were held with the city attorney's office. I think that where it gets down to is, as I mentioned in my, in the beginning, is currently the REA and the agreements that are in the REA are part of the contract with New South.
That is correct.
Okay. So none of the amendments, though? I mean, again, I know there's been some discussion and recognition on both sides of the amendments, but if you are strictly with what the REA says, it is, it is currently the binding document, because nothing has been recorded, the original REA?
I, I wouldn't say that, but I would say that it is a part of the document, absolutely.
Okay. I'm not a lawyer, and I asked this question before, but the, you know, if a, if a document that was designed that none of us were involved in at that time, but says that this REA can only be amended if, if recorded, that seems to, from my perspective, seems to be the, the basis of which. Now, maybe, you know, everyone wants to change it, and they agree to do that. If I heard you correctly in your response to Mr. Weiss's question as well, if in fact, the, there is any difference between what New South responded to the RFP and what the contract says, and what the REA originally said, that the city, if it, and this is particularly about staffing, I mean, there may be other issues, but I think we're all down to staffing, the city is committed to ensure that the number of staff as required by that will be in place, even if we have to pay for that, since, then, since New South only applied, only responded to the RFP based on what was in the RFP, not in the REA.
The contract contemplates that staffing will change as is needed. The city always was going to be responsible for the costs.
Associated with that.
If increasing the staffing meant that there were additional costs.
Whether it's greater than the REA or the REA.
That is correct.
As it, as it is. Okay. So that there is that, that commitment?
Absolutely.
I think that, again, everyone, and what I've heard from the council members is ensuring that there is a, a process, and one which has some leverage for, again, separate from the provider that exists there, because it looks like the city has taken its responsibility, but that we would never want there to be a, a situation where there was a need for greater staffing, and that the owner of that property had no leverage to ensure that that occurred, and particularly occurred subsequent to the REA.
That will not occur, because the city will be evaluating whether or not that, that staffing is appropriate, and will be, in fact, implementing that, as I mentioned.
But it will be no less than what the REA says.
I can't say that.
Okay, that's, that's where we're getting, that's where everyone's getting into, is that the REA has certain requirements in there that the city agreed to at the time that the building was, was built and the parking lot was built.
There was a consultant report that had a variety of recommendations, including a staffing plan. That was in place in the 90s. In 2004, all the parties, including CIM, agreed that that was a very not cost-effective plan. People were sitting around and not working and getting paid. So all parties modified it. The difference or the dispute, as I have indicated before, is only in the nature...
Excuse me.
...of what procedures were to take place, to make an official, recorded amendment to the reciprocal easement agreement, so that that recordation would run with the land.
And there's been no recordation?
There is no recordation of modifications. I believe that the operating agreement and the parties had legal right to change the staffing plan.
Martin Blaine, DOT, also I want to add that in the RFP, the staffing plan, which was based on the 2004 agreement with Sim and the city, that content part of the protest procedure was never brought up. In other words, during the content phase of the RFP, there was no protest. So they agreed.
That is correct.
And I know, and I know you all brought that up in the, in the committee, but from my perspective, if, if there, and, and I don't know if it's a requirement of any agreement that you have to oppose or change the RFP during the process, we do a lot of RFPs that may or may not, you know, agree. I think it is, again, getting back to the, to the REA. I, I think that, I feel comfortable with the REA is the binding document until there is such, that there's a recordation, and that, I think, you know, Mr. Cardenas and I were chatting briefly about that, because that seems to be the, the bone of contention.
Thank you. I didn't consider my time that went over. Mr. Cardenas?
Ms. Gruel just asked if the document was recorded, and then you went on to say, kind of like, well, I don't see why it needed to be recorded, all the parties agreed. What format was this agreement between all parties, and who are all those parties?
I'll let the department speak to that.
Okay, good.
The agreements were through a series of meetings and email correspondences amongst CIM, which at the time was the, both, I believe, the owner of the hotel, as well as the owner of the retail in the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. But you're not telling me, what was the agreement that everybody adhered to? Was it on a napkin? Was it on a document? No, I'm kidding, I'm not kidding. There was a notorious agreement in Sacramento, where Speaker Willie Brown laid it out on a napkin, and it's sitting in a restaurant up there. It's one of the biggest agreements ever in the fight of titans in, in the state legislature. And then subsequently, they, they followed through with, with a bill. So my point is, what document is it? What format did you use? And where is this document?
There were meetings in 2004, and we have the record of those meetings. Neither party, neither Sim nor the city, did the recordation. That perhaps should have been done.
Okay. Let's get out the point of recordation. We know it was never recorded. But even if a document is not recorded, and you have parties who actually sign somebody's name, who has the authority to sign on behalf of those parties, or that party, signs that document, then you have, I'm not a lawyer, you're a lot closer to have a legal binding document than saying, "Well, we had some meetings and discussions were had, everybody seemed to be happy and cool with it, and therefore, we moved forward, and customary practice from that point forward was adhered as such." Now, I'm talking to our lawyer. Isn't it important to you to know what format that agreement is in, and where that documented agreement is?
It is in a series of minutes of...
My time, please. Yeah, I'm sorry.
It is in a series of minutes of meetings, emails, the RFP, which was drafted. There was a bid conference where those staffing plans were not challenged. There was a protest period where any prospective proposer or interested party could challenge the terms and conditions of the proposed RFP, which included the revised staffing plan. No protest or objection was made, including by CIM. On the contrary, CIM and their parking partner bid on the revised parking plan, with no objection that it didn't relate back to the original 1999 staffing plan.
It's been a long discussion, and I think we finally came down to what this is really about. We put out an RFP not based on the, what is it called? The 19, let's refer to it as the 1999 agreement, or 2000, or, excuse me, 1990 agreement. We put out an RFP not based on the 1990, 99, excuse me, the 1999 agreement. We put out an RFP based on this 2004 understanding.
Well, we included the original 1999 reciprocal easement agreement and all of its many terms and conditions as part of the RFP.
But the 2004 understanding is different than the 1999.
The staffing plan was modified by the parties during the life of the previous contract.
You're saying that no one put any contention toward that throughout this process?
That is correct.
Are we finished with the process?
Well, the council needs to make a selection.
After a vote today, I think we're finished, but before a vote that occurs today, then we're not finished with the process. And we're bringing this issue up before we sign a contract with the people who bid on this contract, correct? Correct?
Correct.
So technically speaking, the process is still fluid?
Definitely.
And we are not forced to agree on this as the RFP was put out, and as the negotiations have come forward. We're not required to.
The, the council is free to make whatever selection decision it wishes.
But it sounds to me as though there is some, there's some ambiguity on the staffing plan portion between the 1999 and the 2004 understanding. And yet, nobody's been able to tell me, in the last two minutes, where this 2004 document is that is binding or agreed upon in a fashion that can legally be binding to the parties. My time, please. You don't have it?
I, I, I have already indicated in my answer that I believe that the actions of the party, of the parties go toward modification of the staffing plan. And, and I will also say that if there are, if there is a legal dispute subsequent to the execution of the agreement, the parties certainly have legal rights and remedies, and we have dispute resolution procedures to iron that out. There isn't that great a distance between the original staffing plan and the new staffing plan, but the modified staffing plan is just far less expensive for the city, and much more cost-effective. And it was agreed to by all the bidders.
See, that's the part where I would love, Mr. Garcetti, I would love to see that document, because unfortunately, in my time as a councilman, just over four years, we have had understandings and misunderstandings based on people's recollections, or were told as a council that something is understood, or that is in fact the fact, and the fact of the matter is, somebody along the way made an assumption, other good people adhered to that assumption, and then we find out too late, at the expense of the taxpayers, that we've got a problem. We've got a big hole in our legal ability to defend our position.
One thing that may give you some comfort, Mr. Cardenas, is that with the revisions to the proposed draft operating agreement, should there be a need for the city to move up the staffing plan to the original reciprocal easement agreement, and provide some additional parking attendance, because that original staffing plan had counted them that way, the city is not, the taxpayers are not absorbing those additional costs.
Okay. Okay, you're talking about the practicality of it, and I, and I understand what you're saying, but my point is, I would much rather move on firm footing that the 2004 understanding is in fact a binding agreement, and then we can lay our future process on that, that, that premise that is in fact solid. I don't get the feeling right now that it's solid.
It was codified in the RFP. It's laid out in detail, the staffing plan that was...
Sir, the RFP means nothing right now, until we take a vote today. That RFP can be thrown out. That RFP can be negated and say, "Oops, sorry, everybody, you wasted your time, it doesn't exist anymore. We're starting over," correct? So how is it codified in the RFP process, and we haven't even finished this process?
Well, I will say...
It is documented, it's part of history, certain things were said, certain things took place, certain things were put in writing, et cetera, but it doesn't mean... But it doesn't mean that we should assume that everything there is on solid ground, that it is on solid legal ground, that we should be following that, those portions of the process, and then adhering our understandings and our firm belief that we are on solid ground. That's my point.
Correspondents from council for CIM themselves acknowledged the modification of the staffing plan and that CIM had agreed to it.
There's a difference between custom and practice and a legal binding modification, aren't there? Isn't there a difference?
There could be, depending on the dispute. I guess the best legal advice I can give this honorable body is that we do not believe that this particular dispute ought to preclude the council from making a contract selection.
Anyway, Mr. Garcetti, all I'm saying is, if that recording, and I don't mean recording as in legal recording with the county or with...if anybody can show me where in fact that legal binding change is in fact in writing, I would love to see it before I take a vote. And until I see it, I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti, I'm not ready to take a vote. I would hope that you could be able to produce it for us within 24 hours.
Thank you very much. And to close, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I didn't realize that my district was so popular this morning, so I apologize for this taking so much time. We did the pre-work to actually make this relatively easy process here in council. And let me say a couple of things that this boils down to. There are a couple of parties who will feel most the impact of any parking mistakes that are made at this location. One, of course, is the owners of the property, CIM Group, those who operate it. But two, and I think all of you can appreciate this the most, is the council member, because I will get the calls from businesses, including CIM, if things are not working. I will get calls from the residents who live along Orange, residents who are from Mr. Labanza's districts when traffic snarls and stops, if we don't have enough people there to allow people to come in quickly. The theater, which we own, which we don't know what will be coming into the future, the Kodak Theater, but we look forward to seeing great things, not just the Academy Awards and special events, but hopefully shows that will stay there for some long time. I will probably feel that as much as anybody, and, you know, CIM may lose money, but those of us who are in office, when we feel things, people vote us out of office. I'm confident of the work that we've put in here. I'm confident that it isn't the city attorney's office just negotiating with CIM, and somehow we're just all learning about it today. Where we're at reflects my office, I want to say that very clearly, my office and our confidence. And if people don't have the faith and trust that my office can deliver something that's not only in our self-interest, but also in the interest of them, that they can have that opinion, and that is absolutely fine. But I'm confident that we have done good work here, and that the long-range planning, as I mentioned before, of what we're going to do with this garage, is really the important thing to keep focused on. The levels, whatever they were, and Mr. Cardenas, I know, brought this up, but the levels, whatever they were, it happens to be that CIM was one of the bidders to administer the parking. Now, I personally believe that would have been more logical, but that's not how RFPs work, and they came in a little bit above, under what happened, and a different bidder won. And that's fair, and fair is fair. But in bidding on that, you can protest about the structure of an RFP beforehand, there's actually a mechanism to do that, but that wasn't done. And then those levels were accepted in the bid that they themselves put forward in competition with the other folks. So I appreciate that this was brought up afterwards, but this is something that moved at the same time. There was an acknowledgement, implicit acknowledgement, that that level, the 2004 level, was okay to bid on. And if not, we should have, you know, modified that. Now, I understand the fear. Let me return to the fear that people have. I understand the fear that something may not work. I feel confident because of the same fear that I would share, and that I'm going to be the person who gets hit with it. But secondly, we also are looking at levels of just human beings who, if you've been in this garage, and I hope people spend as much time as I have in that garage, sit there and go like this all day long, go this direction, go this direction. Now, New South Parking, we're going to work with you, and I expect very strongly, and I've had nothing but assurances, but whether we have assurance or not, the practice is going to be what we look at, to make sure that we have the technology and the people, that it isn't just about staffing levels. I've appreciated what the...one of the principles of CIM has done, looking at technology around the world, in places like Europe, where we've seen the technology exist in places like The Grove that give you digital information about how many spaces are available and stuff, but we haven't employed that aggressively, and that's not the fault of CIM, certainly. We've had Five Star, who's been operating it, which is a whole 'nother bag of things, because some people said, "Why are we talking about selling this off?" Well, we needed a different operator in the meantime, because Five Star Parking's been in there, and you've probably read articles about some disagreements about where all the money was going there. Right or wrong, that's why we had an RFP in the interim. We will make this work. I would ask for your support in making this work. That document you asked for is in the RFP. I don't know if we have a copy of the RFP, so we can give it to Mr. Cardenas right now here, but that's there. So the document that you're asking for is in this RFP, and we'll hand it to you. Yeah, and that was what was said. It's actually part written into the RFP, so I'm happy to hand that over. But I would ask for your support. Sorry, this took so long. I assure CIM this is going to work, and I look forward to making it work. There's nothing more near and dear to my heart than making sure that this project works. We put a lot of time and energy into it to make sure that we've negotiated things, that we feel comfortable with those protections. We look forward to a good administration of this in the meantime from New South, and let's get this done and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And it's within the discretion of the chair to decide whether to reopen the public hearing, and I will just read the cards of those who were present today into the record, since the public hearing has already been held. For the proposal, Scott Tepper and Jerry Skillet. Against proposal, Jerry Newman and Emily Murray. So with that, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Item 44, called Special, four cards from the public.
That is Miriam Fogler and Donna Pearlman in the San Fernando Valley.
Well, what a way of administration, but you don't have it right here on these fee waivers. And I know the city workers hear me loud and clear, and they know what's going on here at City Hall. All this...you're wasting our money left and right, giving money to St. Vincent Medical Center, I mean, and also Blessed Sacramento Carnival. Those are church events, and there's a separation of church and state here. ACLU, ACLU alert. So anyway, we need to put you on notice that you cannot do this, and I don't know where Sharon Brewer is, but we need you here. We don't want them to close down our video conferencing here so that they can try to save more money, that after all the city's fiscal crisis should not be landing on the city workers, it should be on this horseshoe here. You're responsible for making sure that the budget is done every year, and you shouldn't be doing things like this on your projects, your CRA projects. And the CRA, there's another one here, the CRA, the Norah Noho project, that should not be getting any fees either. They should be getting it from the CRA. After all, they're the ones that are stealing the money. We need a...we need Robin Hood here to take the money back from CRA and put it back in our city, because that's what we need, our money. And the mayor should know that, too. And I saw in the Daily News, this gentleman is running against him, and he showed all the things that are going on, all the expenditures that the city is doing. It's unbelievable. We should not have no bonds for gangs, and we should not be hiring gangs, because we have a civil services system here, and we should not be just throwing it around, because, you know, we want talented people and people experience and skills to be working for our city, not down low, where, you know, they need training for these individuals and background checks. And so we need to put our money where our mouth says. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donna Pearlman, I believe, out in the San Fernando Valley.
My name is Pearman, P-E-A-R-M-A-N. Don't put an L in there. Anyway, I'm also against all these fee waivers. It looks like the CRA, they stealing all our money all the time, making high-density projects all the time. And here, we're waiving all these fees. It seems like that all they have to do is just come over there and say, "Hey, I want you to pay for my block party, I want you to pay for this," and then you'll pay for that. And I'm...sorry, I missed number 42, because I would have been totally against that. I don't see...I think the 10 that approved having the higher amount given to Pierce, I think they should take it out of their paycheck. So I just wanted to say that the city employees, they don't get any money, but you're waiving these fees, and I don't think it's right. And I guess that's all right. Oh, Sharon Brewer, please come back. I want you to come over there and add them all up, and I know that these are lease costs. They're adding up. It's going into thousands of dollars. That the city is in a big trouble. We keep on having to cut back on things, saying that the city employees can't have that, raising the rates on DWP and trash, and having to pay for new fees, all because...but we can still waive fees. This is not...doesn't...one plus one doesn't add to three.
No, it doesn't. Thank you very much. Next item...
We have to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Open the roll, please. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. All right, next item, please.
Item 51, called Special by Councilmember Gruel, and there are cards on that.
Right, Ms. Gruel, if you don't mind, why don't we let two speakers in the valley go first and get that on the record? Again, back to our speakers in the valley, Miriam Fogler and Donna...what...Donna?
Pearman.
Pearman. Way it's written.
Okay, so I'm speaking on the matter of, we just had lights out here, folks. We just had a sample of it, and it was very, very scary, because you don't know what's going to happen here. We have, you know, we have terrorists that want us dead. So we don't want to tell the terrorists, "We're going to do this, day and day." You know, this is invitation for them to do something to us. I don't want that to happen. And it's just, you don't know. The mistakes can happen, you know. You know, the city workers, the DWP, the DWP is doing their best, but you know their infrastructure is falling apart, because you know you're not keeping up with the CRA projects that you've been adding on to the infrastructure. So don't blame the ratepayers, or the DWP, or the city workers, because they're all working very hard. And I don't mean to vouch for DWP, because they got in the big disparity and big raise compared to city workers, but the unions should not be fighting one another. They should be working together to make the city work much better so that we can transform the city into a life savings, energy saver by having...we can invest in life saving. We can put energy things into our city right now, folks. If we would just take back the money that the CRA takes, that the CRA is not investing into energy-saving projects, at least they could be doing that much to help the DWP to offset the rate increase that they want to pass on to the ratepayers or the taxpayers, and also the city workers as well, that they can reap the benefits all the way, you know, everywhere here. So I don't know why that there's no measure of saving us money instead of finding a way of spending money. I don't think there's any feasibility of doing this one hour a year, you know. It's not going to make a dent at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other...Donna Pearman is our next speaker on that.
Hi, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, I'm against this, and I think it's very confusing, and I don't see how these people are going to know when this is happening, this hour. And we have to remember that there's a lot of people that don't speak English, that speak a lot of other languages, and I have a feeling that that's going to be very confusing for them, and very confusing for people who don't get the television set or see Channel 35. So I would seriously think about this, and I'm disappointed about number 42 again, as I said. And I don't...sorry, I didn't see that. Anyway, so, yeah, vote against this one, because it's too confusing, and I don't think it's going to be helping anybody or saving anybody. It's not a good safety measure, and it's for the terrorists, it's going to find out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Oh, sorry. We have a couple of council members who want to speak on this. My apologies. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. You were anxious there, but I know you support this Lights Out Los Angeles, and Ms. Perry and I are so pleased to co-introduce this today. Colleagues, Los Angeles has been a leader to conserve natural resources, so it makes sense for us to launch this kind of public education campaign. Let us be clear, this is October 20th from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. It is voluntary. We're doing this after a program that was established and done in Sydney, Australia, where for one hour, they had lights out, they had civic buildings, people did that at their homes if they chose to. Also, they worked with the businesses as well. And they saved 25 tons of carbon dioxide, which is equivalent to approximately 49,000 car trips during that hour period of time. And in Los Angeles, we know that it is so critically important to conserve energy. Just look at what occurred this summer and the fact that we did not have enough energy to, and we had problems with transformers, but primarily, people having everything on at the same time. This is not a one-night stand. This is an opportunity for us to educate the public about the importance of conserving energy, for them to think twice when they leave a room to make sure that they have turned off the light. Sometimes we begin with our children, and as describing to my four-year-old what it meant to conserve energy, it's in the same vein of recycling and making sure that we turn off our water during, when we brush our teeth or to have those shorter showers. This is our opportunity to say, Los Angeles and San Francisco and other cities in this country will be able to participate. And another aspect of this, which is similar to San Francisco, is being able to distribute our compact fluorescent light bulbs. And Ms. Perry, and I know Mr. Garcetti and I have been big advocates of ensuring that we get these fluorescent light bulbs out through the DWP. We have given over 400,000 CFLs out already, and we anticipate giving more. In fact, this Saturday at our child health and safety fair in my district, we will be handing out free these compact fluorescent light bulbs to encourage the public to understand that it can make a huge difference. Today, in the county of Los Angeles, I believe they are also adopting this motion, and for us to work together with the chambers, with the neighbor councils. The Central City Association has already indicated their support for this, and we think it is a way in which we can once again be a leader on the issue of conserving energy and use this as an example of how we should do this more frequently. Again, it is an hour on October 20th at 8:00 p.m. We will be working here in the city to have the lights turned out, to be able to say we can do better in the city of Los Angeles. So I would ask for, and I vote today, to send a message that we're serious about conserving energy and we're serious about the environment. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Perry.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just very quickly, this is an opportunity when we talk about things that we can do, actions that we can take that are under our control. This doesn't require any new money, no taxes, no infrastructure, nothing. It's just a simple flick of the switch to give us as a city a benchmark as to what we can do to conserve energy, and hopefully it will serve as a springboard towards maybe a longer-range, broader program for us to undertake. So I hope for all of those who are listening that they will participate and use this as an opportunity to learn and to teach. So thank you very much, and hopefully we'll have a unanimous vote.
Mr. Alagon.
This is good government stuff. Nobody can oppose it. I was just curious how much energy we could save if we had shorter council meetings.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll then. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. If we can reconsider item 44 for one public speaker card missed, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Good morning, good afternoon. Good morning, good afternoon. Thank you very much, and thank you, Sergeant Avon, for bringing that to their attention. Actually, I wanted to point out, because this is one of my favorite rails against you, that the city council is declaring voter education a forum, or they did. I guess that's more to the point. That's almost like the kettle, calling the kettle black. I hope that you inform the public that in the city council chambers, if we're not voting, it counts as a yes. I mean, it's so against anything that voting stands for, and for you to be educating voters, that you also mention that at one point, there had to be an agenda item that was brought before the council that mentioned... had to be an agenda item that was brought before the council that mentioned, this agenda item is going to allow us not to vote, so we need your vote so we don't have to vote. What kind of voting education are you, are you proposing for the public? Thank you.
Thank you. And don't go anywhere, Mr. Sacks. We're going to take up 55. Any of a card on that? So let's just open the roll again on 44. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And number 55, Mr. Sacks.
Thank you again. I went to the airport commission meeting yesterday and although I can appreciate the environmental issues, the Tom Bradley International Terminal is being refurbished and they've already got a $10 million change order for greening of Tom Bradley. My question regarding these environmental issues, when the bill is $10 million, how much of a forest did they have to cut down to create $10 million? At what point will there be a return on the investment? I know that we're all concerned about the environment, but if it's costing $10 million upfront, where's the savings? What, what's saved? That $10 million is, is, could have gone to pay for the garden that was destroyed on Alameda Street in mid-city that the homeless people or the mid-city people had created around 46th Street in Alameda. And now it's going for toilet bowl, I mean, and I can appreciate the fact that the changes need to be made, but $10 million for greening for environmental issues? And I also asked about the new mid-city, the midfield concourse, if that is being built as a green building or will the airport commission be coming back or will the, the board of airport commissioners be hearing from their staff that they need $20 million to update that funding? These things need to be addressed prior to the actual construction being incurred. I'd also like to know about greening for MTA projects. They seem to own a lot of property where they're building a lot of apartment units. These all need to be addressed.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Sacks. Colleagues, if you'll indulge me from the chair just for one moment, on this item number 55, next week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, it'll be the first of our single topic series that came out of the council retreat. Remember, there are five subjects that folks indicated a desire to have kind of a longer, more in-depth conversation about. Mr. Smith came up with the idea to do one on the environment and Ms. Perry, as chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, will be helping plan that with, with my office and Ms. Gruel's office. So Tuesday and Wednesday, be prepared to stay through lunch, we'll figure out what to do there on the, on the food side. But the idea is to bring all the city departments before us, to hear what they're doing on environmental policy and essentially to draft and send back to committee for refinement, what is the city council's environmental agenda for the coming legislative year. So we really look forward to folks being engaged. Come with your ideas. We'll be looking at all the outstanding motions that we have on environmental issues and we welcome new motions to come in. All the departments will present as well as folks from environmental groups that are, have suggestions or compliments or, or otherwise criticisms of what we need to be doing. So we look forward. And for each of you that are experts in a given area, you know, Ms. Hahn with the port or Mr. Reyes with the river, other things, we encourage you in this coming week to work with your staffs on, on making sure that some of the things you'd like to accomplish on the environment in those respective areas are part of that discussion as well. So with that, we will open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on October 3rd for personal business, a motion is required.
Okay, I will move that, Ms. Perry seconds. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Weesar requests to be excused October 16th and 17th for city business, a motion is required for the 17th.
Okay, I will move and Ms. Perry again, seconds. That excuse is granted.
And Councilmember LeBonde requests to be excused Friday, November 9th for personal business, a motion is required.
That excuse is granted.
A motion is required on that one, Mr. Perry.
Oh, sorry. I will move and Ms. Hahn seconds.
That clears the desk.
All right. Announcements, colleagues, business announcements. Again, we're doing community announcements on Fridays with Channel 35 in the back, but Mr. Zine?
I just wanted to acknowledge our Washington representative, Jim Sealy, who's here in chambers, direct from Washington, DC. Mr. Jim Sealy.
Welcome, Mr. Sealy.
Mr. Jim Sealy, pay attention. He doesn't even know we're talking about him.
You're being acknowledged on television, Mr. Sealy.
Jim Sealy, welcome to the city of Los Angeles from Washington, DC. Get on camera so people know who you are. Our Washington representative who takes care of things, the voice of the city in Washington, DC, Congress, the Senate, the White House, anytime we go to DC, Jim has all the connections. So welcome to LA, Jim.
All right. Any other announcements? No other announcements? Okay. Any adjourning motions? Yep. Can I ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for adjourning motions? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Could we adjourn today in the memory of Charlene Apple, who passed away on Saturday at the young age of 60 after a battle with cancer? Charlene lived in Harbor City where she was very active. She was president of a software company, a member of the Harbor City Gateway Rotary Club, and past president of the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce. She was devoted to her family and was always generous with her time and resources. She's survived by her mother, Genevieve, brothers Ralph, Dennis, and Ken, sisters Teresa, Catherine, and Veeve, 15 nieces and nephews, and seven grandnieces and nephews. Charlene's been a friend of mine for a very long time and she will be greatly missed as she was one who constantly found ways to give back to her community.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Florence Brewer, who passed away on Saturday, September the 22nd. Ms. Brewer, who was lovingly referred to as Tuffy, was born in Beaumont, Texas. She was raised and educated in Chicago, Illinois. She moved to Los Angeles in 48. She attended the LA County Nursing School where she graduated as an RN, but she had a passion for sewing and she elected to pass up her nursing career and pursue her passion of following her dream to become a dress designer. Her uncle, Henry O'Brien, was a proprietor of his own choir road manufacturing company which employed Florence where she perfected her skills as a tailor. She eventually branched out in the accepted employment with Michael Levine on Santee in Los Angeles where she climbed the fashion ladder and soon became highly sought after in the entertainment industry. Florence worked for major Hollywood studios in the wardrobe department where she made costumes for the famous Rockettes. She was a personal groomer for Hattie McDaniel's, who was the first black Oscar-winning actress, and she designed and tailored made her clothes. She also worked for a number of other distinguished entertainers and dignitaries throughout Los Angeles. She survived, survived by her aunt Ruth Cooper and Frances Rogers and a host of other relatives. Her funeral service was held on September 29th at the Inglewood Cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for two resolutions. First of all, that we adjourn in memory of Donald L. Jones. Don Jones was the father of Dr. Lucy Jones, who many of us know as the voice of earthquakes. Dr. Jones out of Caltech is a great engineer and predictor of earthquakes and planner for earthquakes here in the Los Angeles, Southern California area. Her father passed away on September 23rd of a brief illness. He was born in China in 1928, came back to America, got his master's degree from Calis University, Berkeley, had a long engineering degree and history at TRW in Northrop, worked on the first Pioneer One, which is the first commercially operated satellite ever produced. He was well-loved by his family. He was an amateur musician and worked diligently in his church, in the church choir, et cetera, and a very well-liked man in his community on behalf of Dr. Lucy Jones. I'd like to second that.
Okay. Mr. Rosenthal, second.
The second one is, I ask that we introduce this on behalf of all the valley council members who have the opportunity to work with a very fine man who just passed away on Monday, our former school board member, John Lorenson. John, for all that knew him, was a really decent, fine human being. He lived in Chatsworth, he was a teacher most of his life. He taught at Columbus Middle School in Mr. Zine's district and later at Canoga Park High School. He was, got a master's degree in computers back in the early 1980s and became one of the very first computer teachers at LA Unified School District. He was well-known as a voice of the teachers on the school board and a very, very strong voice for providing for the teachers and keeping teachers in our system, providing for good education for those teachers, making sure that they were well-supported. And he is really well-loved in the Chatsworth area. He battled from brain cancer and in his last years and a half, two years on the school board, for those that worked with him and saw him, we could see that life was slipping away for John. And yet, he never missed a day of work. He had an operation for his brain cancer on Thursday and reported back to the school board on Tuesday for his next meeting. He is a very dear man. He was really loved by his students and everybody that had a chance to work for him and work with him. On behalf of all of us in the San Fernando Valley who work with the school members.
All members. And Ms. Gruel.
And I just wanted to add, that was very well said, Greg, because he was a true dedicated servant. He was everywhere to talk about kids and cared about the future of our children and I think demonstrated that by his years of, of being a teacher, but then went that next step to really, you know, change public policy. And he is someone that everyone liked when they, when they met him and you could just see that he cared. He represented a portion of my district as well when he was a school board member. And I think that he, we had hoped when he had his first operation, I think that, that he was going to be okay and that was the initial response that we had received. But I know that he was recently at an event where he was honored and it was clear that his challenge was really before him, but I want to add my condolences to his entire family.
Thank you. Mr. Alagon.
I just want to add my comments with regard to John. Even when you disagreed with him, he was impossible to not like. He's one of those rare people in politics who always has the right tone and, and is driven by positive relationships, notwithstanding differences of opinion. I just want to give you a little anecdote. When, when Mayor Bradley transferred me to the San Fernando Valley to become the San Fernando Valley Area Coordinator, I met with Dodo Meyer, who was the coordinator at that time, and, and one of the first people she asked me to sit down with, it was actually a group out of Chatsworth, Estelle Lit, Mark Lit, John Lorenson, all of your best friends, Mr. Smith, and his assistant, I'm forgetting, Ed Burke, of course. The four of them were longstanding liberal Democrats that were in the northwest sector of the San Fernando Valley, which everybody knows is a very conservative community. So I, I had a very fond relationship for them, I had a tremendous respect for them in the midst of a very conservative area. They kept a very liberal tone and Mr. Litson was one of the key spokespersons. Also, let's not forget, he was just a great teacher at, at Chatsworth and Canoga Park and he just was, was always encouraging young people to stay in education. I'll miss him, he was a good guy and like I said, I didn't always agree with him, but I never didn't like him.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to say that I called John Lorenson friend and he called me friend and that one of the things that John Lorenson exuded was this kindness that everybody expressed, but also he truly was a humble person. He exuded humility. He was a very kind individual and unfortunately, not everybody can carry that throughout their life. He carried it all the way to the end. So I just wanted to say, I was fortunate to know John Lorenson and call him friend and may he rest in peace and my condolences to his family.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Well, worked with John and he was recently honored, the Walk of Hearts for Teachers on, Wendy just briefly mentioned that event. It was just a few weeks ago where he was there and he received that award, the Walk of Hearts along Sherman Way. They've dedicated the sidewalk like the Hollywood Walk of Fame. They've got the Walk of Hearts for Teachers and John was honored and recognized. He was in a wheelchair at that time and you could tell that his life was coming to an end, but he was there, fought to the end. When he first had this cancer, he never gave up. He continued to work, continued to go to meetings. And there was a recent, during the campaign for the school board, there was a debate, which I moderated the debate at the Jewish home and he was there with his opponent and he was still fighting. And you could tell that he was weak, but he never gave up. John was always a true fighter. So good friend of the valley, a teacher, as you all mentioned, and a school board member who was well-respected by the teachers' union. So John Lorenson, may he rest in peace, a true fighter for the students and the people of the city of Los Angeles, in particular, San Fernando Valley. And I have an adjourning motion on one of my deputies, legislative deputy Chris Olson. His grandfather passed away on September 25th. Chris attended the services back in Minnesota. James W. Herschelman passed away, grandfather of legislative deputy Chris Olson, 75 years of age, lived in a town called Wyoming, Minnesota. Jim was born April 15th, 1932, in the farming community of Meadville, Pennsylvania, worked on the family farm in his youth until he joined the United States Navy, served in Korean War. Served the country for five years in the South Pacific and was honored with discharge after his military service. Moved to Southern California where he established a 30-year career as a research and development engineer. During that time, he continued his service in the armed forces as a member of the Air Force Reserve, traveling frequently to bases in Alaska, a state he dearly loved. After retiring and moving to the town of Wyoming, Minnesota, continued his tradition of service as a member of the Wyoming Township Planning Commission, also served on the executive committee of the Lake Forest Sportsman's Club, actively pursued his interest of hunting, woodworking, and bird watching. Funeral services were held Friday, September 28th, interment with military honors took place at Fort Nellie National Cemetery in Minneapolis, survived by his wife Sylvia, daughter Linda, son-in-law Mark, and grandson, my legislative deputy, Chris Olson. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Second from Ms. Gruel. There's no other adjourning motions. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned and we will next be in session tomorrow. That is October 3rd, 2007 here in John Farrow Council Chambers. Have a great day.